We're going to call to order the City of Crescent City regular meeting for June 4th, 2018, and I'd ask our clerk if you would please call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Greenow?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Here.
Councilmember Follman?
Here.
Mayor Protemkeim?
Here.
And Mayor Insor.
I am here. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Councilmember Greenow, would you please lead us?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are coming out of closed session. We are going to return to closed session after our regular meeting, but at this time, council, do we have anything to report of a closed session?
No action to report, but we will be reconvening after the regular session.
All right. Thank you. We are going to open up general public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, the council is not able to take extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff or appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments should be directed towards the entire council, and any comments that are not at the microphone will be out of order and not part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and residency, either city or county, for the record, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. The public will also be given an additional three minutes for each agendized item. Do we have any general public comment tonight? Mr. Fari? Good evening.
My name is Kent Fari and I'm resident of Gaski, California. I know that this is just open comments on the public, so I just like to say that I try to attend city council, and that's at night, and the county council meetings, which is 10 to 3 during the day, which works out a lot better. But for me to come in at night and take care, take part of this meeting, I miss out on my only buses to Gaski. There's only three buses a day, B's Culture Center at 7:00, 12:30, and at 4:00 p.m. That makes me have to sleep outside in a sleeping bag when I come attend these meetings because I don't have motel room to stay at, a motel room. And I was just trying to think that maybe you being the executive director, the board of directors of RCT, you might try to get them to do a 10:00 p.m. night owl route to Gaski to get people back to Gaski so they can maybe come into evening and go to a cinema and maybe take in a dinner and maybe partake in a city council meeting without having to sleep outside to do so.
All right. Thank you.
Linda Seder, County. First, I'd like to say that I appreciate whoever's putting the flowers out downtown. That's a nice touch. I hope they're being watered. Secondly, there's a couple of things that's a little irritating. One is the Delnort office supply has had a broken window for two years. Now, Tab and Associates owns a lot of the buildings downtown. Some of those buildings inside are mold infested, and these businesses have to work in those conditions, and there's no reason whatsoever for them to get away with blight conditions downtown. Now, I understand Mr. Barnes, I don't know which one, is the owner of Tab and Associates or some of these buildings. I would really like for you guys to use your ordinances and enforce them on these people instead of playing the good old boy syndrome and get things done and fixed downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comment this evening? Yes, Ms. Cooper?
Hi. Good evening, all. It strikes me that we're every day losing out on opportunities to... That's right. This interferes.
Yeah.
Okay. I can hear, but you can't. Okay. So, every day, we're losing out on opportunities to save huge amounts of money because we spend a lot of money on power, power. And there are companies out there, just like the harbor is engaging a company to invest in placing solar panels for our infrastructure needs, for our power. They are doing this, you know, they take the burnham of the installation. It isn't costing the harbor. I see California wants all new buildings to be solar efficient. We're building a new airport. That wasn't considered. I brought it up. We put in lights in the Front Street Park. I brought up that they were pretty, but they didn't have consideration for solar energy. So, how long are we going to go down the road of not saving ourselves some money here and being smart and investing? Not even, not even investing. Other companies do it for you, and they take, they take the hit on the installation, and then, and your cost is lower from day one because every light post out there should have a solar cell on it. My little house works, my little, I put it in the ground. It charges up during day and shines at night. They make bigger ones for cities like you. You don't even need wiring, although your posts have wiring. Your sewer and water, you know, a lot of that is pumping, pumping costs. And what's your backup system? A generator. Why isn't there solar cells planned for that? That can work 24 hours a day and serve as backup. We have to start thinking really progressively to take advantage of the opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general public comment? And typically, we don't engage in conversations about this, but I will say, Ms. Cooper, that we are looking at some of those things, and one of the projected things that we're looking for grant funding on is solar specifically for the wastewater treatment plant. And that's a specialized thing, different than a lot of other things, but your points are well taken, and there are things that staff is exploring. So, I appreciate you continuing to encourage us to do that.
...
Yep. Yep. All right. Thank you. Any other general public comment this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to reports and presentations. Monty?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Monty Benenhall is here to give a presentation on the Pacific Power's new meter program that they have going.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for your time. Really appreciate some time on your agenda this evening to talk to you about an initiative that we have that we're going to be introducing this month and be working throughout the summer months to complete here in Delnort County for all 14,000 of the customers we serve in this area here. And that's a smart meter deployment. Smart meters have been around for a long period of time. We're a little bit late to the game getting, in getting this done, but there's some very good reasons for that. There's about 70 million smart meters that are installed throughout the U.S. in residences and businesses. And the information you have before you this evening will be, information will be actually mailed out in customers' bills this month and next month, depending on what cycle we would normally read your bill at. So, this same information will be in customers' bill that will be coming out very soon. I mentioned that we were late to the game. There's a good reason why we were late to the game as far as installation on this. The early, early models of smart meters were basically one-way communication in that they eliminated somebody having to come out and actually read your meter on a monthly basis. So, it eliminated a meter reader's position, basically, but it did really nothing else to actually help with service or to cut costs for the utility serving the area here. So, some of the benefits of a smart meter now that has two-way communications is that we have quicker responses to outages. These particular meters communicate back to us when there's an outage. They let us know where there is service and where there is not service in adjacent areas. So, we can mobilize people to go patrol an area more specifically rather than have to patrol an entire circuit. Sometimes, times we'll still have to do that, but this is going to aid us in most, most occasions when we have an outage. So, we'll be able to respond more quickly. It'll save us time, save us money, save you money in rates in the long term, plus you can get your service restored much more quickly than you would have in the past. So, it's a very good thing. That's probably the single biggest advantage that we have in this as far as benefits to customers. Again, you're not going to have the cost of a meter reader for the utilities. Again, there's a cost savings in rates there. There's about 17 positions in the state of California that will be eliminated through meter readers, collectors, and that type of a thing. They've had up to 24 months notice to try to bid for other jobs and that type of thing along the way, but there will be elimination of some jobs around this, and those costs, of course, will be eliminated. And the accuracy will be improved. The information that you'll see coming out doesn't have that human error impact potentially where there could be a misread or something like that. The meter, the meter reading information will actually be sent across the wires. It's going to be accurate 100% of the time. Information to the customer. Businesses are actually going to be able to look online if they care to, to see what their energy usage is in 15-minute increments. So, if you do some kind of an installation or something like that in a business, add additional equipment or something like that, different hours of operation, you're going to actually be able to monitor what your usage is and potentially amend your behavior if you choose to do so. Residential customers will actually have the information on an hourly basis. You can actually download an app if you want to, if you're not at your home or something like that. You can monitor what that energy usage is. Along with that, you can also set tolerances for your energy usage. So, if you have a problem with, say, a water pump that's logged or a water heater that's failing, that type of a thing, and you've got an element that's not working properly or something like that, if you set a tolerance based on what your history is, and it starts to exceed that halfway through the month or two-thirds the way through the month, you'll know there's a problem at your house, and you can actually try to respond to that to save some money rather than have to wait the full 30 days to actually get that bill back to you. Okay? So, there's some real benefits to the customer. There's also some real benefits to the utility and its operations. Concerns. And you see some concerns. There's a lot of information out on the Internet, and if you were to pull up the Internet smart meter, you're going to see some, some concerns about fire hazards. And our sister utility, which is NV Energy, which serves all of Nevada, had some issues with some of the deployment they had with smart meters to where when they put the meters in, there was a problem with the socket and the jaws. There's four jaws that the meter would go into. It's an older base. Some of the jaws broke, or there was a faulty connection there, caused heat with that fault, and caused some fires actually at home. So, there were some problems with that. I can tell you in our installations that we are going to have a contractor that'll be out doing that work for us that we've hired. Silver Springs Networks, they'll be identified as a contractor working for Pacific Power that will be out deploying these meters. When they pull the meter, there'll be an inspection. There'll be a picture taken of the base. If there's a problem with the base, and quite often you'll find some problems over here where you have some corrosion from salt air, we're going to call an electrician in. At our cost, we'll make some repairs to the meter jaws before we actually do the install. Behind that, we'll have our people going out, and we'll be spot checking to make sure that the contractor's doing a good job. 100% of the meters will be tested before they're installed, and the meters also have a link in them there that actually detects heat. So, if there's a problem with the fault, they should identify that there's a problem with the fault at the meter itself as well. So, we're doing a good job as far as trying to be careful upfront, making sure that we've got good information that we can rely on, and that we've got a safe installation along the way as well. Again, if we run into too much of a problem and the wiring doesn't look safe beyond the base and that type of a thing, we'll notify the customers. We're going to set those things aside, and we'll work with the customer to get a meter installed at some point there, but we're going to try to make sure that we've got an absolutely safe installation before we do anything like that. Privacy. Some customers are concerned about privacy and the fact that, you know, there's going to be information going to be going from my meter to a router and then on to a point in Portland or Salt Lake that'll actually be doing the billing on this thing. The only information, the only data that's going to be transmitted from your home meter is going to be an identifier, which is going to be basically a meter number. It's not going to have your address. It's not going to have your name, no banking information, no social security information, whole house usage that will be sent on to a router and on to billing there. So, there's not going to be any personal information at all that's going to be transmitted from your smart meter. Okay? So, hopefully, that's not too much of a concern. We've also got a very secure network. We've been working for years on a secure network along the way. We feel pretty confident that we've got that along the way and that customers have good, safe, secure information. Health concerns. This is probably the biggest, biggest concern that you hear about smart meters is concern about low-frequency radio waves. But if you have Wi-Fi at your house, if you go to a Wi-Fi cafe, if you use a cellphone, the cellphone, just Silver Springs Network ran a study on this thing, and what their comparison was as far as cellphone usage as opposed to smart meter. Smart meter, standing in front of it for an entire year is the equivalent of one 15-minute phone call with a cellphone put to your head. So, that is, that's, that, I mean, it's the same type of technology, basically, you're looking at there with far fewer effects. The other thing with a smart meter is typically it's going to be mounted on your wall outside of your home, and it's going to be directed away from there where the radio frequency is actually going away from the home rather than into the home. So, we feel very safe. What we have with the install here, there's a proven track record with smart meters, and we're not, you know, if there are concerns, if you hear concerns from your constituency, there is a number that you can call for our customer service. We've got people that are specifically trained to talk through these particular issues and that type of thing. You can either direct them to me, or you can direct them to that number, and they should get their questions answered through that particular process there. One of the last things I'll leave you with, if customers have concerns about smart meters and they don't want an install, they can opt out. They don't have to have a smart meter installed, so they can keep their old analog meter if they care to do so. Now, there will be a charge to read the meter. That has not been determined yet because there's a disagreement with the cost of service that we've displayed and the Department of Ratepayer Advocates. So, we're going to end up going to an administrative law judge, basically, to determine what a fair cost is for an opt-out. And it will be a monthly charge, basically, for us to go out and read the meter. We didn't feel it was, it was fair to socialize those costs that everybody else would be paying for, that the people that want to keep their old meter would should be paying for that themselves. Okay? So, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question. I have a question. So, let's say you have an old commercial building.
Mm-hmm.
And this, let's say your box is...
Meter base?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is two-pronged. Is that what they call it?
Two-pronged.
Has, the meter has the, just the two prongs?
Oh, oh, an old A-base meter base. Yes, yes.
Yeah. So, would that commercial user then have to upgrade that box, or is that something that would be included in?
I don't think that in that particular case that we're going to be looking to do that, but I think that we're going to look at those on a case-by-case basis, see how we can try to accommodate the business owner on something like that. Yeah. And I don't know if that would be a shared cost. I think we'd have to look at that on an individual basis.
Okay. Because I know that there are some commercial buildings downtown.
Yes. And there are also some old A-bases that are a lot of residents as well, some of the older parts of town.
And that is a significant upgrade.
It is. Yeah, the cost associated with changing on a meter base is significant.
Okay.
Yeah. The other thing with the commercial bases there is you've got to have a manual bypass, and the old, some of the old bases don't have. So, if we go out to test a meter or pull a meter for some reason, you can keep that business in service. That's a manual bypass on a meter, yeah, which is even more costly.
Great.
Any other questions? Yes?
You had said that the meter itself detects heat. What would be the response of Pacific Power if it started to heat up?
There would be a signal would be sent to us, and we would respond to that particular residence or business to check out, see what the problem was.
So, you'd give them, the person a call and say, "Hey, we're having issues"?
We would probably try to, we would probably try to respond rather than, we would definitely contact the customer at some point, but we would probably try to respond right away so if it was a safety concern, it would be, we'd be on it right away. Okay. It may require a service disconnect or something like that if there was a hazard out there.
All right. Thanks, Monty.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
Okay. Before, before we move on into our actual, excuse me?
Okay. Yeah. I don't know. I'm asking. So...
Yeah, if you have some thoughts.
Yeah. So, is this a done deal? Has our city leaders decided to go ahead with this project, or is this something that's being forced on the public, putting in these meters? And I understand he said, "This is the time to engage because this is on the agenda." He said, you know, first off, it's called a pig in a poke, okay? If you're buying something, you don't know what the heck's really going to happen. But I just saw a documentary just within weeks ago regarding these meters and houses being caught on fire. So, it's all fine and dandy. You can get up here and say that, "Oh, well, if there's some kind of heat thing going on, we're going to notify the person," but, but he doesn't know when, and by then, your house could burn down. I think this is a safety issue. You really need to concentrate on keeping your public safe. So, I don't know if you've already agreed to do this. I don't know if this is something being forced on the community, but I think I would investigate a little bit more than just say, "Oh, okay. Yeah, that sounds great." No, ask more questions. Be safe. Because I don't want to be charged an additional tax because I don't want to put their meter on because there's possibility of fire or whatnot else. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Sure.
This particular issue really isn't a local jurisdictional issue. The California Constitution basically defers electric utility infrastructure to the commission, CPUC, basically. So, it's really not a jurisdictional issue. This is more of an informational thing than anything else as far as what we're doing with the deployment of the smart meters.
Thank you. All right. Appreciate it.
I mean, so, while you're here, I think the point, you know, about the fire is, is there a potential for this system to help identify problems with, that cause fires, problems? And if, if so, would there be, would we be able to integrate a system where the fire department is automatically, you know, contacted in case, you know, there is a problem? I mean, is this something that can help with safety? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? All right. Thank you. Monty, appreciate that update and presentation. Before we move on into our consent calendar and our regular agenda, many of you are probably aware of the passing of C. Ray Smith this past week. Mr. Smith served 19 years on this council, served five times in this seat as mayor, and we certainly, our, our thoughts and prayers go out to the family, and would like to ask if you would be so inclined to join with me just in a moment of silence in, in memory of C. Ray Smith, please. Thank you. Thank you. All right. We'll move on. On consent, we have several items, a regular council meeting minutes from the May 21st meeting, as well as the budget workshop, May 10th and 11th, warrant claims lists for May 12th through the 25th, payroll report of May 12th through the 18th. Is that it? Just three items? Yep. All right. Do you have any public comment on our consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council for action.
Move to approve consent.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have multiple seconds. Take your pick. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Protemkeim?
Yes.
And Mayor Insor.
Yes. Thank you. We move on to public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight. We're, one of them is continued from the previous meeting. It is continued, continued public hearing regarding the annual fee schedule update. Mr. Weir?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our finance director, Linda Lever. She will be leading this presentation and going to give the... be leading this presentation and going to give the highlights of the overall fee schedule. And then we'll have Matt Hildebrandt, our pool manager, will also be giving a presentation about the pool fees as it's one of the, the areas where we're asking for increased fees to help offset the increased costs.
Questions? Excuse me.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So every year at about this time, we revisit the city's fee schedule. These are fees that the city charges typically to try to recover our costs for services that we provide, services that really should be paid for by the person who's receiving the service rather than just sort of a, a general blanket, you know, tax or something like that. For the last several years, we have tried to adjust our fees based on a CPI index, the, an inflation index. So you will see in the, in the fee schedule, there are several fees that are recommended to be based on that inflation index. What we used was the 12-month change from December to December, which is 2.1%. For, for most of the fees, this was a very small increase. Fees that are not directly related to inflation, we did not recommend any change for. Fees that are set by an ordinance, a state code, or a contract, we don't recommend changes for. The cultural center, we are not recommending a change in fees at this time. There's, as you know, there's an ad hoc committee that is working on some plans for the cultural center. So we're waiting for direction from that committee. There is one change in the cultural center section. That's in the deposit. It was brought to our attention that the damage deposit only covered the, the key. And it really should cover the, the key, the microphones, the speakers, all, you know, all of that. So we just changed the language there. We didn't change the amount. It was also brought to my attention that the attachment at the back of the fee schedule for the building permit was just missing a page. So that's added back in, but no changes. And then we also had some changes to the pool fees. I will point out one correction to the agenda packet on the pool fee page. The section that's labeled swimming lessons, the, there's, the fourth line down that says individual lesson, $25 per hour for one or $40 per hour for two, I put no change. That was my error. I apologize. I should have said delete. And then it was replaced by the three individual lines below that. So that was just a typo on my part. But Matt Hildebrandt, our longtime pool manager, is here to go over the fees because there are several different categories. And there's kind of different, different calculations for each. And then when he's finished, I can also come back up and answer questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So I was asked to explain how these fees work. We try to keep everything consistent. So if you look at the daily rate, proposed daily rate, and then the proposed 10-visit pass, if they get the 10-visit pass, they're getting two free visits essentially. And then if you look at the 10-visit versus the 50-visit, they're getting 10 free visits. So we try to keep that distance between the prices consistent as we go through. That was for the recreation and fitness program. Sorry, I didn't say that at first. So at the top of the page there. Annual passes, the idea for years now has been that an annual pass is worth it if you come more than three times a week. So we try to make it so that if you multiply the 50-visit by three, that gives you the annual pass rate. Now, last year, that would have been a really large increase on the adult annual pass. So we only did half of it last year. So the reason that one is changing this year was to make up that difference. Swimming lessons, we try to do small increases every two to three years just because operating costs go up. I have called around to various swimming pools in, on the North Coast, and our lessons are either right in line with theirs or lower. So we're not, we're not above anyone else in the swimming lesson category. The individual lesson program, I started about three years ago. It's been very, very successful. The idea here is that people are paying approximately twice as much for the one-on-one instruction as they do the group instruction. Pool rentals, we did a, three years, three years ago with Susan, we, we figured that it costs approximately $100 an hour to operate the pool. And that was three years ago. And our pool rental rates were much lower than that. So we've been raising them every year to get to that $100 an hour base rate. And then, of course, they pay more if they want the water slide because they need additional lifeguards. So I'm not asking any increases on the rentals this year because we've done it for the last three. The other groups that rent the pool, I, just a very small, a $1 change for the swim teams. $5 charge on the swim meet. The team has been so young, they haven't hosted any meets for a few years. But when they do have a meet, we have to close the pool to the public for an entire day or more. So we don't get any income from that. So the idea is to eventually get those, that meat price to be the same as the base rate for any pool rental. But they do, would continue to get a deeply discounted rate for their, for their practices. And then physical therapists that use the pool, the increase this year would just be in line with the 50-cent increase for the recreation and exercise programs. So do you have any questions for me?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Mayor, if I, if I might just add to that a little bit, and we'll discuss it a little bit more when we get into the budget. But part of this next year, we will be moving forward on a pool revenue study. And at that point, rates will be evaluated as well as programs and scheduling and whatnot. So that is kind of the next piece of this. So this is really just an effort to try to, try to keep up with the operational costs that are, that are ongoing, especially this year with the loss of the CBPG grant, which formally funded the pool for $75,000, I believe, last year.
Okay. All right. So do we have any, any other questions regarding the fee structure as a whole, either pool or any, any of the other fees as have been lined out by our finance director? Anything? Okay. How about public comment on the fee structure? Yep.
Linda Sutter. Um, so how much does the city pay yearly on this pool? Because it comes from taxpayers' money, right? And, and I understand you have to make money to run this place, but gosh, during the, I know this probably sounds cheap to you guys, but I was paying $40 a month when I was residing in Medford, Oregon, and I had access to the pool every day for as long as I wanted. And that included gym and everything else. Of course, that was through the YMCA. Do the, do the high school kids have to pay for their, to go to, use the pool for their swim meets and whatnot else? Or is that the school district that pays?
The swim team pays.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know. I don't know how much you guys spend on a budget, but it must be an awful lot. And, and we're paying an awful lot. So I don't know how that evens out.
It costs over $400,000 a year to operate the pool.
$400,000 a year. And, and you, and normally you get grant CBPG funds for that or...
We have used CBPG money in the past. Hasn't, we haven't always had it. CBPG money has not always been used to help supplement the pool, but it has been. And the previous two grants had, had some money stipulated to, to help offset the cost. Our finance director could probably speak to this. We have about a $240,000 difference between operations and, and income in the pool. Would that be close?
No, that's actually the 400,000 is the difference between revenues and expenses.
Oh.
So even with the money that we charge to use the pool, the general fund still contributes another $400,000.
It was 240 with the, the 150?
Yes.
In the, from the CBPG.
So it's $600,000 a year to run the pool? You said it just, it takes an additional 400,000?
So, is this on? Okay. So for example, in the next year's fiscal budget, which we'll be discussing in the next item, the proposed revenue for the pool is 240,000 and the cost is 650.
Yeah.
For a year?
Yes.
Yes, a year. Okay. We got to fix that. That's outrageous. That's a lot. Thank you.
Well, and the, and the interesting thing, and, and I don't disagree with you, Ms. Sutter, is that this is obviously an asset that serves our entire community and our entire county.
Absolutely.
But it, but it is, but it is the city's pool.
But isn't it, wouldn't it be more economical if you charged by the month? A, a person could go by the month instead of, I mean, not $150. Nobody has that to spend. But you would get more people, the more people you get in, charged by the month per person.
Well, and that's why we've done the, the passes where you can get a 10-day pass or 30 or 50. And then the price goes down, as Matt was saying, that, that if you buy the bigger pass, which accounts to about a month, you're actually getting less days than if you were paying it by the day. And you were, you used the number of like $40 a month at the YMCA. Obviously, we're not the YMCA.
No.
But if you take the, if you take the $525 and you divided that by 12, we're, we're not really that far out of that number of what a person could spend a month and be able to go to that pool every day.
Well, here's the thing, and I know that we're a small population and, and I, you know, I was just down in Woodland a couple of weeks ago. And the thing is, is for the first three hours of the day, you don't have to pay anything to use their pool. And I don't know if it's because they have a big population or what, or if the school district is paying for their pool. But we got to find different money for this because that's a lot of money going into that pool.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Eileen Cooper. A so obvious solution here, as I mentioned before. We have this giant building using tons of energy to heat that swimming pool. The power bill is significant for this facility. And we don't, we don't have solar water heaters up there. Oh, my God! That's way cheaper than solar cells. That, they, they make, they make solar water heaters that can heat in sub-zero weather. They're vacuums. Every, every even little ounce of light goes in there in that little glass box in the vacuum and just heats your water up. And you don't have to heat that pool water up high. It can be done entirely by the sun. Why are we throwing our dollars out? Why aren't we more progressive? That's been sitting this way for years. And we have CBPG grants that can be used for things like this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other public comment on the, on the fee schedule? All right. Then we'll bring it back to the council. If council has any further comments. If not, then we're looking for action regarding the, the resolution 2018-21, I believe. Linda, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the attached, okay.
Move to approve resolution 2018-21, adopting the revised fee schedule to be effective July 1st, 2018.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Protemkeim?
Manob Stain.
And Mayor Enscore.
Yes. All right. Very good. We will move on then to the fiscal year 2018-19 budget and appropriations limit. Linda.
Okay.
Actually, Linda, if I could, if I could start this one off.
Sure.
You can stay at the podium if you want. I just wanted to first thank the council for their, for their time. So we had a budget workshop on May 10th and May 11th in which we covered the, we covered the 18-19 budget. The workshop, I felt from a city staff point of view, I thought went very well. The budget, which included basically a review of all the funds and obviously a focus on the general fund because that is the fund that, that really covers a lot of the, a lot of the areas in which we have to make tough decisions and the council has to make tough decisions. From a staff level, I also want to thank all the department heads. This is not a, this is not a short process. This process starts in February and we worked diligently right up until, well, probably half hour before the budget meeting, to be completely honest, to try to finalize that, that document and that presentation that went before the council. This year, the focus was to try to get to a, a balanced is what I'll say, but Linda's going to give me the, the dirty look. We're going to try to get to a budget that was, where the revenues basically equaled the expenditures or the actual expenditures. The budget that you're, you're seeing tonight, as we discussed at the budget meeting, is not balanced. It is, actually has about a $200,000 deficit in operational expenses. And as Linda will get into more, we, we expect the actual expenses, just due to the way that we budget, to equal those revenues. So in a sense, we're, we're projecting that we will have that balanced budget. Then we looked at projects that were either prioritized because they will hopefully bring in additional revenue to the city, or will decrease operational expenses, or our priority maintenance-type expenses, such as what you'll, what you'll find in the cultural center budget. So that's how we worked through it. Again, like to thank the council for, for working with us through that process. Basically, the, the budget was recommended at that workshop to be approved as submitted with two exceptions. And that is, one, to pay the additional $33,000 on the, on the PERS unfunded liabilities. And then the second would be to allocate $12,000 to continue our efforts with the sister city relationship. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our finance director, who will get into more of the details.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weir and Mayor and council members. Okay. So I, I promise this is not going to be two and a half hours like the workshop.
Thank you.
We're going to, we're going to summarize here and then you can ask questions if you have questions. Okay. So, so as Mr. Weir mentioned, just a brief review of how the process works. As soon as we complete the mid-year update of the current year budget in February, we turn right around and immediately start on next year's budget, which is what you're seeing tonight. The city manager, myself, all the department heads and all the managers, we worked together for several months trying to get to that operational budget. We presented that to you and to the public at the workshop on May 10th and 11th, received a direction about those two items. And then that's what's incorporated into the budget that is presented tonight. So as discussed, there were just a few changes to what we presented at the budget workshop, the sister city, the PERS unfunded liability. And then just as I was doing my final checks, there was a slight correction to a gas tax expenditure, very minor. And then we received our OPEB report for next year, which was actually, came in slightly lower than I had estimated. So that was a good thing. So just to review some of the trends that are driving our revenues and our expenses, the CPI for Los Angeles, at least, March over March was 3.8%. Regular and part-time wages are projected to be up 3.5%. However, our overtime is projected to decrease significantly, and that is mostly due to having full staffing at the police department. So overall, overall wages are going to be up about 2% over the current year. So overall, overall wages are gonna be up about 2% over the current year's budget. And we've reduced our budget's benefit by about 4%. As we explained at the, at the workshop, we're reducing that budget to actual savings in the benefits. The unfunded liability payment is included in the budget that's presented tonight, that $33,000 to be paid toward the liability for the miscellaneous employees. And then our workers' comp and general insurance is down slightly from the current year. We've made a lot of efforts with our safety committee and making safety improvements around the city, so that is paying off. So just, I'm, I'm just gonna give a brief overview, fund by fund, and then if you have questions about the specifics, let me know. But we covered a lot of this at the workshop already. So in the general fund, we are proposing just under $5.5 million in revenues and about 5.9 million in expenditures for a budgeted deficit of approximately $423,000. That is an operational deficit of about 207,000. And that's what Mr. Weir was talking about. Because we use conservative budgeting, we most likely won't use 100% of every single budget line. We anticipate that that $207,000 deficit will actually come in somewhere close to zero by the time we get to the end of the year. So the fund balance for the current year is budgeted to come in at just under 1.6. It's actually projected to come in at about 2 million, again, due to those budget-to-actual savings. So if the budget tonight is adopted, then our fund balance at the end of next fiscal year would be 1.6 million, just over 1.6, which is about 27% reserve and our policy is to have at least 25%. Just a very brief review of what's covered in the general fund. Basically, it's everything that's not in another fund. I mean, that's, that's really what it's for. It's public safety, it's building and code enforcement, the cultural center, planning, the pool, street department administration. All of those general city services are in this budget. The projects that make up the 215,000, and this is if all of these projects are completed, this 215,000 will come out of that general fund reserve as shown in the budget. We need to update our housing element. We are working on an RFP for a master plan, a 10-year plan for the fire department. Also, a master plan slash revenue study for the pool department to take a look at the programs that we're offering and what we're charging. The next phase of the wayfinding signs, a siding repair for the cultural center, the implementation of voice-over IP, which will save on our telephone costs, and the horseshoe pit at Beachfront Park. And all of that is $215,800. There are no changes there from what we discussed at the workshop. Before I go on, do you wanna discuss the general fund at all? Or do you wanna wait till the end?
Let's just go ahead.
Okay. So for the housing authority, again, this is, as we talked about at the workshop and lots of other budget meetings, this is fully funded by HUD. And the revenues are projected based on the HUD funding, which is on a calendar year basis, trying to match that up with our budgeting, which is on a fiscal year basis. But what we're looking at is 3,546,000 in revenues, 3,545,000 in expenses, leaving a net positive of about $1,200. So the fund balance at the end of this year is projected to be 227,000. Next year would be 228,000. In the RV park, revenues are projected at 366,000, operating expenses at 294,000. And it's proposed in this budget to repay the general fund loan, including interest, in full for 235,000, leaving a net result for the year of a deficit of 163,000. However, that still would leave a working capital balance of about 75,000. And our projections going forward are that revenues will come in higher than operating expenses because we're trying to build up some more working capital to continue the improvements at the park. In the sewer fund, revenues projected at 4.7 million. No real increases there because we don't currently have a rate increase scheduled. Operating expenses at about 3.5 million. We've got capital projects planned for 526,000 and our debt service payment is 1.4 million. That will get us to a, a net deficit for the year of 719,000. As you know, our working capital in the sewer fund this year had that 650,000 added back. So including our budget-to-actual savings for the year, we're looking at roughly 5.3, 5.4 million in working capital. Next year, with the deficit of 719,000, we would be at 4.6. And again, this is looking forward to some fairly significant capital projects in the next few years, which will be using up that working capital. Here's a, oh, it's kinda small, sorry. Here's the, the list of the projects that are in that 526,000. Again, they haven't changed from the budget workshop. Site drains, equipment storage, MBR flow control valve, lighting at the facility, chlorine monitoring project, energy optimization, some replacement of lab equipment, major cleaning of the digester, lift station rehabilitation. That's the projects that we're working on with the county. And a chlorine mixer. We are also working on Prop 1 grant funding for additional projects, including solar and some other cost-saving projects. In the water fund, again, no real increase in revenue projected because there's no rate increase scheduled at this time. 2.6 million in revenues, just over 2 million in operating expenses. We're looking at 580,000 in capital projects and 350,000 in a loan payment. For a net, for the year, a deficit of about 350,000. We'll be looking at working capital at the end of this year of about 1.5 million. So next year, that would get us to 1,150,000. We do have a few projects included. Some big-ticket items is the SCADA project, the removal of the elevated tank that's been replaced with the, the valve system and rainy pump rebuild. We also have a Prop 1 application for the water fund for several large projects. Those projects are not in that included budget until we hear back on the grant and then we'll be coming back to, to the council for direction on those. So I don't, unless you would like me to, I wasn't gonna go into every single one of our non-major funds. Just a reminder that they are all included in the budget document that's in your agenda packet. And those are the things like the special revenue funds, which is where we track our grant projects, the gas tax fund, our internal service funds, fiduciary funds, CIP funds. They're all included in the packet. We did discuss them at least somewhat at the budget workshop. But every fund is in the document in your packet. Other items that are included in this is the position control. We're removing two temporary positions that were authorized last year that are just no longer needed. We are asking to combine several of the public works positions into what we call a group, meaning that instead of saying, for example, we'll authorize five maintenance workers and one equipment operator, we're just going to combine those because really it's a progression. Of course, we wouldn't promote somebody within the group if it wasn't in the budget. It just helps streamline the process so we don't have to come back with a new position control document every time someone gets a promotion. And also, there's a request to increase the, the current part-time lab assistant to a full-time. And that's just because right now there's two full-time and one half-time person working seven days a week. And when somebody's out for sick leave or training or a vacation, we end up with lots of overtime. The final item is the appropriations limit. This, as you know, it's part of the California Constitution. We have to come back with our, our population and price factors. All the calculations are in your agenda packet. Basically, just at a high-level summary, we're nowhere near our limit. So we just need to approve the, the factors that are chosen and the new limit for next year. Basically, what that means is that if our tax revenues were to come in higher than that limit, they would have, those additional revenues couldn't be spent. They would have to be returned to the taxpayers. But we're nowhere close to that. Okay, so that was very fast. Do you have questions?
I just wanted a clarification on the RV park fund.
The reason we have that 200,000 or whatever deficit
is because we paid ourselves back. That's, is that correct?
Correct. So when the RV park was renovated, we had a grant, economic development grant for 700 and, I think it was $77,000. The general fund made a loan to the RV park for 230,000 to complete the project. So now, the RV park has earned enough money over the last three years that it's just gonna pay the general fund back.
So that's not gonna be the case next year?
No, no. It's a once and done.
All right, awesome.
Just for all of you, have any questions?
Just a brief one.
Sure.
Under the city council budget, for the 27-18 budget, we had a total budget of $162,965 this year. There's, that number's been decreased to 132,716.
Yes.
Can you explain that decrease to us, please?
Yes, there are basically two items that are driving that. Number one is that we decreased the travel allotment per council member from 2,500 to 2,000 to be more in line with what's actually been spent over the last four years. But the biggest decrease is in what we're budgeting for the benefits for the council members. Again, looking at what's actually been used compared to what we've been budgeting. This still allows for some cushion if a member of council needs to change their, you know, their insurance coverage for whatever reason. But it just brings it closer to what we've actually spent. If you look back at the previous year's, actual expenses for that line have been between 30 and 60,000. But if we budget 100%, it's 90. So we're just budgeting closer to the actual cost.
I mean, there's just a perception out there that we're here to line our pockets and I just want people to note that we're decreasing our benefits this year, including travel benefits.
Yes.
Thank you. That's it.
Any other, any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Leaver. Well, let's, let's open up public comment then regarding the budget and appropriations limit. Yes?
Linda Sutter, I just have one question. What did you budget for the Sister City this year?
$12,000.
For this year? For next year?
18-19 budget.
You're gonna, you're gonna budget $12,000 for the Sister City?
Yes.
Next year? Okay, you know, I got this one. You got a credit card without no limit on the backs of the taxpayers. You totally spend it. We're gonna vote you out come election day. Hey, 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 election day.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment?
Hi, Eileen Cooper. You know, every, every, every little different division has an energy cost. But it would be interesting to get a, a whole picture of what we could save on energy if we really put our minds to it. You know, and just, the harbor did a, had an energy audit. You know, besides you replace your light bulbs and all. But what are the opportunities for, for solar cells? You know, that can be given to you. And, and you're, and, and they pay the power, they take over the power bills. And, and you start off, you know, from day one just having a reduced rate and not having to install anything. This, a city, an individual, you know, has to think, oh, well, I'm not gonna be around for very long, you know. I'm not gonna make the investment or whatever. But a city, a city goes on and on and reaps the benefits for years and years. The solar cells that they make today can last, what, a half a century? What are you waiting for? Just get creative, do it. You know, every department, it's hard to see, but if you added up all those departments, what you're paying for energy, what are all those little ticket items from every single division? How much it, it could be? If you really put your minds to doing something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sutter, Ms. Sutter, excuse me. If you wanna speak, come up to the podium. All right, thank you. Thank you for being here. We'll wait. All right. Any other public comment tonight regarding our, our budget? Okay, then we'll bring it back to the council. Does the council have any, any other questions or comments that they would like to make regarding the, this, this year's budget? Well, I'll weigh in because I, I want this to be clear on the record and I know that there are people who may be watching at home. When we have the budget workshop, we discussed this issue regarding the Sister City. And I know that this has been vetted out in, in, in social media. But this council, and, and if someone chooses to change their opinion about this tonight, they're welcome to do so. But this council agreed 5-0 that this relationship with Rikas and Taka to Japan is something that we need to continue to invest in. Councilmember Greenow said it perfectly. He said, if we don't invest in this, if we don't have a buy-in, then we're not showing that we're serious. And I think that that's where this council stands. And $12,000 out of a $20 million budget is such a small amount of money for the potential benefit that this relationship has long-term for our community and for our sister-city in, in Japan. I'm sorry that, that this is something that, that not everyone can, can understand or picture or even agree with. But I believe that I speak on behalf of all of this council that we are unanimous in our support of continuing to build this relationship and that's why we have placed it in the budget. So I've been quiet for two weeks. That's all I'll say. We, we support it and we're gonna continue to support it because we believe in the value here. All right.
And on top of that, we put it in the budget at a public meeting.
Yes.
And the budget is a public document.
That's true.
For everybody to weigh in on.
Yeah.
So just, we're doing our best to be completely upfront and, and doing this the right way.
Thank you, Councilmember Short.
And also, we collectively feel justified that, that the return on our investment will be more than worth it for this community.
All right.
Yeah, I, I just wanna echo the importance 'cause if, if there's one thing that we can take from this relationship that saves one life, one more, I'd say it's worth the, the extra investment. I'd say again, what Councilwoman Keim had mentioned about the investment that we're making here. And we're really big on getting people to shop local. I mean, this is shopping local. This is, a whole other city is a market for us now. This is a whole bunch of other people that are gonna get hooked on, you know, porta-pints beer, that are gonna be buying sweatshirts from Trees and Mysteries and, you know, eating Romiano cheese. I mean, that's gonna make a lot of money for this community. $12,000 is gonna go a long way with that.
All right. Okay. Ms. Leaver, you wanna give us some instructions of what you need from us now?
Sure, what we're looking for is if you don't have any changes suggested at this time, there are two resolutions that need to be adopted. One of them is adopting the budget and the other one is adopting the factors to calculate the appropriations limit. So that's 2018-26 and 2018-27 are the two resolutions.
All right, we will close this public hearing then and I will bring it back to the council for actions on these two resolutions.
I move we adopt Resolution Number 2018-26, adopting the fiscal 2018-19 budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, thank you. Would you please pull the vote? I have a second. Thank you. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Keim?
Yes.
And Mayor Enscore.
Yes, very good. And now the appropriations limit?
I will move that we adopt resolution 2018-27 in approving the fiscal year 2018-2019 GAN limit annual adjustment factors.
Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Keim?
Yes.
And Mayor Enscore.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Lever, I just wanna tell you and, and the staff, Mr. Weir, this has been the best budget process since I've been on the council. You guys are all to be commended. Please pass that on to all of our staff, all of our department heads and everybody that made this, I think, the, the most seamless process that we've been through, at least since I've been on the council. And, and that is, that certainly is, goes to you guys' credit and to our fine staff. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's very appreciated.
I can only echo that. I haven't been here that long, but that is by far, is by far evident that, that you guys put in a lot of effort into that budget workshop. So, thank you.
Alright. We are going to go on to item number seven on the agenda, which is the adoption of the sidewalk ordinance, number 801. This is something that was taken up at a meeting a month ago. And Mr. Weir, you want to weigh in on this first?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. This is, uh, this is obviously an important ordinance. This has been before the council a few times. So earlier in the year, staff took this ordinance and really, we're looking for direction from the council in how to modify this ordinance. So at that meeting, the council directed staff to remove any, any reference to modifications or additions to buildings. Sort of back up though, just to, to give the public an idea of the ordinance that we're talking about. This is the ordinance that requires the, the addition of sidewalks or the, or the removal and replacement of sidewalks to meet current codes, to meet current building codes. So that can include building new sidewalks when there aren't any sidewalks in front of a, in front of a parcel or a building. And it also can include bringing existing sidewalks up to current ADA codes. Which, you know, that, that requirement can become cumbersome, to, to say the least. ADA codes, just from a sidewalk standpoint, you're dealing with certain engineering factors, which is such as like curb ramps, which are at the corners, allowing ADA access from the street intersection onto the sidewalk. And it also gets down into the details where we're really talking about cross slope. So a, a 3% cross slope, which is just the slope in which you have that goes perpendicular to your direction of travel, that is out of compliance and you would have to tear that sidewalk out and rebuild it at a 2% sidewalk, which is within current codes. 2% is about a quarter of an inch per foot. So 3% is 3/8ths. So that kinda gives you the, the level of detail that we're talking about. That is, that is current code though, that is ADA standard. So that is our current ordinance is when you are doing any sort of construction that exceeds 25% of the assessed value of your, of your property, that's when city staff has to go and evaluate your sidewalks. This, this obviously has, uh, can be very cumbersome to, to some of the development that is occurring. And that's where the council wanted us to take a look at this. We brought it to council. Council then came back to us and said, basically, we want you to remove any reference to modifications or additions to buildings. We would like you to remove language that requires the, the project cost to exceed the 25% of the assessed value for the, for that triggering cost. And then remove any language that exempted consumption, construction, which did not increase habitable, habitable floor space or, you know, freestanding garages, different things like that. So that was the ordinance that was brought back before the council. We had extended discussion at the May 7th meeting. Reviewing it at a staff level though, we always wanna make sure that we have an ordinance that we feel that we can consistently implement, not only with this staff who has been part of this discussion, but then, you know, the next staff that's, that's coming through. And so as we tried to take that independent look, we think there can be some areas of clarification, which is why the staff report was written the way it was, just to, to try to get clarification on certain items. Council action tonight, this is the, the second reading of this ordinance. So the council, per their prerogative, could very well just adopt this ordinance as is. And staff will do, do its best to implement it and carry out the council's wishes. The other option is to send it back after we have some of these questions answered. Currently, as the, as the ordinance says, just to give some examples, without a minimum project cost, we're talking about a structure that, that is built outside of the, the existing structure. Say it's a, say it's a greenhouse, we'll be talking about that soon. Or a, or a, a small shed in your yard that is a, the construction cost of about $1,000. This, this new ordinance, because it has a 25% limit in it, but that 25% limits the amount of dollars that you have to spend on your ADA compliance efforts. So if you build a $100,000 structure that triggers this, you would have to spend $25,000 on sidewalk improvements. It's fine, you can do quite a, quite a few improvements with your, with the $25,000. However, you build a small structure like a small shed for, say, $1,000, the city would have to go out and evaluate your sidewalks and then you would need to pay $250 or, or put that money towards sidewalk improvement. So that would, becomes a little bit cumbersome on what you can actually do for, for that small dollar amount. You could possibly grind a trip hazard if it's there, but you can't replace really anything. The, the second thing that came to, to mind as we were reviewing this is, and there was discussion on this, is there a difference between residential and commercial? Does the council wanna see that reflected in the ordinance? And then the third thing is, what is new construction? Just to define it a little bit more clearly, we have had a good discussion on it. We, I think, understand the council's intent, but the existing ordinance, because we just eliminated the language of modifications or additions, now it just says construction. So it doesn't have that perspective of removing it from the old, the old ordinance, it'll just say construction. So I can see where future staff might view that as any construction. So we, you know, that we would put in language to, to really define what new construction is. Options for the council, like you said, you can send this ordinance back. You can adopt the ordinance as is and without any direction to bring, you know, another ordinance forward. Or we can adopt this ordinance and then bring back another ordinance, which would, which would add clarity. Those are basically the three options.
Alright, heard our staff report, okay, is one to weigh in first? Do you wanna hear from the public first?
Uh, Mr. Weir, I, if you don't mind me weighing in. I, I appreciate the staff report. I can see where our direction could cause some fog in the process, I guess, if you will. On page 193 of our agenda packet is the underlined, strike-through version of the, of the ordinance that was introduced on May 7th. At the top of the page is 12.04.030, improvements required?
Yes.
Item three that is struck through, I realize that you, you were abiding by council's wishes by, by striking that out. But would it, would it re, uh, would it clarify the issue if we reinstated that, item number three? That you're talking about the greenhouse, just your example there. If the cost of that work did not exceed 25% of the valuation of the property, then that would give staff direction whether or not to trigger the, the sidewalk upgrade? Is, would that help the situation? Would that completely mend the situation?
That would, that would definitely clarify, you know, that first component with the, the small, you know, dollar amount that a proposed developer would have to put towards ADA improvements, especially for a really small project. The existing ordinance has that 25%. So how the process works right now is if you pull a building permit, on that building permit, there's a, a space for us to write down the, the assessed value of the property. And then underneath that, we put down the proposed cost of your development, we do the, the, the math on it and come up with that percentage. So that is, that is one option. So if you're under the 25%, then we don't even worry about this section. If you're over, then we have to go through the assessment. Another option that the council's looking at is to put a fixed dollar amount. You know, if your, your project isn't over, say, $50,000 or, which would require you to have 12,500 worth of improvements, then we're, then this ordinance doesn't apply. So, you know, at this point, those would both be options to try to address that particular component.
Yes, Ms. Greeno?
I was gonna say, what if we were to? I mean, this is a completely different idea. This is, I had a great conversation with Adam Trask the other day. And he had brought up the idea of, of what if the, the responsibility wasn't solely on the property owner? But the property owner and the city came together and the property owner would pay for all the cost of, of the cement, the, the wood that you would use to frame it up. What if the property owner was responsible for all that cost? But the city came alongside and, and was willing to come in and, and pay for the cost of labor? And, and would put that sidewalk in? Would that be, you would, you would, in essence, be doing both things at the same time. You would be encouraging people to put in sidewalks and upgrade their house. I, I think that was a, a great conversation that I had and I thought it was a great idea.
Mr. Trask did come in and, and meet with me as well on, on that particular subject and we were brainstorming ideas and, and, yeah, he did run that particular one by me. What that one would, would do is it would make rebuilding of the sidewalks a lot more feasible, you know, for, for any developer. From a, a staff standpoint, this whole sidewalk discussion is a tough one because I can definitely see where the public is coming from. You're dealing with a, a facility or a structure that is outside of their property limits. Yet, we're requiring them to improvement, to improve that particular sidewalk, yet they don't own it and they have to build it for our standards. So you definitely see where there's some pushback, especially when it becomes to even repair of sidewalks. So Adam's idea was to basically have this partnership idea. From a city staff standpoint and budget standpoint, if they were to pay for all materials associated with those improvements, you wouldn't see an impact to your budget. But then it would just be the, the amount of production that we get out of our crews. So then, instead of working on the items that we have budgeted and, and prioritized, we would have to shift and try to meet their schedule for their development. So there, there'd definitely be some give and take to it. I see the positives because you do create that partnership. But then you also have the, the city staff productivity standpoint that you would be giving up certain things.
I understand, but if this is something that we wanna make a, a priority for, we need to show that we're bought, we have buy-in as well, in my opinion. We're not just putting this on the property owner. That's how I feel about it.
Exactly, because, you know, replacing sidewalks does have a huge, a huge benefit. You look at, with this ordinance being in effect, you have new sidewalks around the Circle Hotel that, that has gone in, based on that development. You have the new sidewalks around Tri-County's Bank. With that development, the Oregon Street Senior Apartments were also replaced. Rumianos also replaced it. If you were to take these components out, you wouldn't have new sidewalks in those areas. And some were in desperate need of, of upgrades and replacements. So if you, if you were to create that, that type of an ordinance, you could facilitate something like that a, a lot easier.
Well, I used to live across the street from Rumianos and they had to tear that sidewalk up several times because they didn't do it right the first couple times.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, that the-
If having our city staff do it would help remedy that, I, I think that would be beneficial too.
I would, I would certainly hope so. All that, you know, the sidewalks are, sidewalks are a, a tricky component. Like you said, if you're out an eighth of an inch, you're in non-compliance. And, you know, for us as a city, we can accept it if it's, we cannot accept it if it's done by a contractor or if it's done by our crews. So if we ended up being off that eighth of an inch, we're ripping it out as well. So then we would be consistent with that. So, but I'm confident in our crews.
I am too.
I, I certainly would be in favor of, of re-looking at some of this. And if it's a cost-sharing partnership, obviously I voted against this ordinance. I've voted against it twice because I believe that as it is now, we're going to get no sidewalk improvements because we've taken out almost all the, the, the requirements to, to do so. And with the exception, really the only thing that this ordinance is going to apply to now is a brand-new house being built someplace. Other than that, there, there's not going to have to be that. And so I think if we, if we wanna be creative and if we're, if we're willing to step back and take another look with staff and, and with community input, with a partnership, I, I think that those are, those are great opportunities for us to, to, to hit pause and say, well, let's do some more research and let's get this right. So I, I certainly would be in favor of, of looking at that. I do think that we need to, if we're, if we hit pause and we're not gonna approve this tonight, I do think we need to really address this commercial versus residential component a little bit because those are, those needs are different. And the, and the, the dollar figures are significantly different. And maybe we simply address that by a, a minimum cost. Maybe that's how you do it. Be, i- i- if you just set that minimum cost and say whatever it is, if it's not above, I don't know what the number used, $50,000, then, then we don't, we don't have to address it. But it, it, not everything is the same here when you're talking about, uh, commercial buildings and, and residential buildings. And we've already established a way to deal with, uh, residential parcels where there's a non-contiguous sidewalk already. We've already made arrangements so that a person who lives, you know, out in the Roosevelt Track and there aren't sidewalks, that they're not going to be required, even if they built a brand-new house on a vacant lot out there if there's not sidewalks. So we've already made some concessions about those things. I just think we just look at the whole thing again and, and come back with as comprehensive of an ordinance as we can. And I like the idea of getting community input and buy-in. So I appreciate that, that input.
The one thing I would add as, you know, my former position as public works director, you know, we dealt with this a lot and we struggled with this a lot. And, you know, I think to have a really effective ordinance, we should address, you know, people being able to do maintenance on their house. You know, re-roofs and redoing the siding or windows. You know, maybe those costs are excluded from, from this. Because we, we don't want a building just to, to turn into a, a blighted building situation because we're trying to, to, you know, enforce sidewalks. You know, they, they have the right to, to do that. So the council has guidance on that. I would like to look at that when we bring back these options to the council.
Well, that's part of what Mr. Young presented to us initially. So I, which I thought was a, a good way of looking at the whole thing.
Well, it does bring up the, I mean, I had this conversation with Mr. Weir about a shared responsibility and I like that idea. But from a manpower standpoint, I'm not sure it's something that we would be able to do. If, if as a homeowner, I put in the, the, um, materials and, and all that funding. And then the city, their, their part was the manpower. I'm not sure that we have the manpower to accommodate those upgrades.
I was kinda having my doubt-strike construction season as it is here in Crescent City. City's pretty busy on its own, so I wonder what your thoughts were on that.
I mean, I like the, I like the shared responsibility.
If it would work. I just wonder with the relatively short summers that we have, if we could get away with it.
Just sort of, you know, brainstorming, you know, with the council tonight on, on this particular subject. If we did have an ordinance that directed staff to do that, what we could do is we could possibly defer those improvements. You know, not defer the improvements that the property owner wants to make. But we could simply say, okay, this is what you will need to pay or this is what you'll have to do. Come up with some sort of an agreement and then based upon our schedule and our timing, then we could complete the construction of those improvements. And like you say, it might not be during that construction season. It might have to be deferred until the next or till we can, can schedule it in. And if, you know, the council wants to see some of those options brought back to them, we could do a quick analysis on the number of staff hours it would take, as well as what, say, the projected cost to the homeowner would be for materials.
I think that would be good.
It'd be worth looking into that, yeah. Um, real quick, I just wanted to know more about the staff's conversation on what a new construction was, the dialogue that happened with staff around that.
So the dialogue in, in regard to the staff conversation is the council's intent, from at least my understanding, of new construction was basically a standalone building. And, you know, and that was the intent that, that basically was directed towards us. As I, and, and conferred with, with fellow staff, Mr. Taylor, Ms. Rice, looking at the ordinance, how it would stand, it just simply said "construction". And so I can see where future staff would view construction as possibly replacing the siding even. Or, you know, anything that required a building permit could be considered construction. So that's where we were wanting just further clarification on what that would be.
Is construction defined somewhere else in the municipal code, or new construction? Is "construction" defined somewhere else in the municipal code, or new construction?
Not, not that I'm aware of, not particularly in this case.
I think that the only place it would be probably, most likely defined is the municipal code adopts the building code by reference and I'm sure there's some sort of definition in there. But it, the way the code reads is it's, it just says "construction," it doesn't say "new construction," so.
And my idea with what I was just saying was that we would just leave the ordinance the same. The only change we would make is that we would be sharing the cost. The homeowner would take care of the materials, the city would take care of the actual construction.
And, you know, and we can certainly do that, although I would just like direction from council that the intent would be for if somebody were to say pull a, you know, redo the siding on their house and also re-roof the house at the same time. Due to the sometimes low assessed values, especially if a property or a structure has been owned by the same person for a long time, those assessed values can be fairly low. So that's where a re-roof or replacement of siding could trigger that. So if that's, if that is the intent, then we can, then we can leave it as-is. If, if the council, you know, would want to, would want to take those provisions out, then we could come back to-
Well, haven't we already taken that provision out? The 25% of the assessed value, it's already gone. We have the 25%. The only 25% that's left in here is that you can't spend more than 25% of your project cost. The assessed value is no longer in this ordinance. That's why I said that nobody's going to have to do anything with, as I read it and I'm anticipating, other than a brand-new building being built, I don't see anybody having to do anything with sidewalks with this ordinance because there is no minimum amount that triggers the, an evaluation of this, the situation.
Correct, yeah. Brand-new construction or moving of a building.
Yeah, that's the only, the only thing that would, that would cause us to have to look at any of it unless somebody, staff, interprets differently what Cause A needs, which certainly is a possibility.
And that's why you need subsection three under improvement required.
Yeah, just like Mr. Weir was just saying with the relatively low property value.
Yeah, I understand.
That might trigger something unintentional. I don't, I don't think the council would have intended that.
But it would be a lower cost if you're just buying materials.
Are you going, looking back at the previous ordinance, if we put it back in?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, when we look at the actual 801, none of that is in there. We've already struck all of that.
That's true.
Again, and speaking for the person who's voted against this, I still think we need to send this back to staff personally, but I'm one vote of five and we can move forward, we need to take public comment, but we can move forward with 801. We've already read it once, this is a second reading, so we can adopt it tonight as Mr. Weir pointed out to us, or we can give it back to staff with some direction. So let's, let's see if anybody else wants to weigh in and then let's, let's give the public an opportunity to, to weigh in on this. Do you have anything else, Mr. Fulman, right now?
No.
Pro Tem?
No.
Mr. Weir, with the, if, just, let's hypothetically say we adopt the ordinance tonight. Would staff be able to deal with it with the understanding that we were going to work on the assessment of staff hours and possibly of future ordinance that would straighten out or look into a partnership between the city and the property owners? Would viewing, viewing this ordinance tonight as somewhat temporary, would, would staff be able to deal with it as council intended?
Yes, I believe we have the, the intent, so my fears are more for future staff. So yeah, with, with the direction to bring this ordinance back for modification, I think staff could deal with it. The slight nuance would be, you know, that small structure, that fifteen hundred dollar shed or a thousand dollar shed. But in that case, we would go out, we would try to assess what deficiencies there are and then if there are some that fall within that dollar amount, staff would then ask the property owner to correct those. If there aren't any, then staff would make that evaluation that no improvements can be made for the dollar amount, is basically what we would do at this point.
Thank you. Shouldn't we get this right the first time before we actually voted into law?
Well, yeah.
That's my opinion on this.
I agree, Jay.
So I think we should send it back to staff, get what we want out of it and then come back. That's how I feel about it.
The only incentive, and I think that maybe this is what Councilmember Short is thinking about, is the existing ordinance does have a lot more requirements in it that, which is what Mr. Young brought to us of trying to make sure that, because there's not stipulation. So a person who does significant maintenance work on a house, it would trigger the requirement to do this under the existing ordinance. I don't know whether or not we can, we can direct staff to, to evaluate on a case-by-case those, those applications while we're going through this process, but that was, that was part of the point that, that our interim city manager, Young, wanted us to address this so that we didn't unduly penalize people who are trying to make improvements to their, their property. So while I, I agree, and I'm certainly a proponent of get it right the first time, I, I would not be, I would not object to, to adopting this if in fact we have the process to stipulate that we want this to be amended. I don't know if we can give that direction, council, or not. I mean, obviously we have to either vote up or down. Can we give stipulation or staff, direction to staff after this, after the fact?
Yeah, you can approve the ordinance and give direction as to, you know, it would be a follow-up ordinance that basically clarified some of the same sections of the municipal code.
You know, it really comes down to that discussion on maintenance. So, you know, the, it somewhat falls on the city manager to make some of those interpretations. We can possibly even take the existing ordinance, interpret the maintenance to not enact this and move forward until we can bring back an ordinance as well. Martha, do you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think there, I think that there is some, you know, erection, construction, modification or addition to. I don't think it's abundantly clear as to whether maintenance-type projects are necessarily included in that language. So it does invite some level of interpretation as far as whether it applies to maintenance projects or not. So I think you could, you know, keep things as are and if that was your concern and, you know, been interpreted that maintenance is not included within those, that line by a previous interim, I don't see why we couldn't continue with that at this time.
It was my hope when this discussion happened earlier this year that we could get this hammered out by the time construction season kicked off for this year. I was hoping that, you know, somebody that would need to come in and improve their property for this, this summer would not be hampered by the sidewalk improvements. So that, that kind of led to my question, could we deal with this the way it's, it's written? Fully intending on exploring the partnership idea, I think it's a great idea, but that was why I was asking that line of questioning is because building season and home improvement season is upon us. I'd like to get this ordinance passed, ordinance passed. That's, that was my intent.
How long do you think it would take to revamp this and bring it back to the council, Eric?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Except we don't have two weeks.
Realistically.
Even looking at the upcoming council schedule, our next meeting's going to be June 12th. So, you know, we're obviously not going to make that meeting and then some of us will be gone for a week in between the two meetings. So our next meeting would be July 2nd. So the soonest that we could bring back options, and really we're going to need some more direction, I believe, as we go through this, you know, especially when we're looking at partnerships. So it's going to take a meeting to receive clear direction and then we'll have to come back and we'll introduce the new ordinance and then it would be brought back for adoption. So, you know, the second meeting, July 1st meeting in August is what we're looking at for bringing it back for discussion at the council. Then we'll have to revise the ordinance, which shouldn't take too long, but you're still looking at possibly, you know, the second meeting in August or first meeting in September to introduce and then the next meeting to adopt. So realistically into September, first part of October before we have the adopted ordinance and then it doesn't go into effect for 30 days.
What if we were to have a special meeting just for that item?
No.
No.
Well, here's, here's my thought.
I'm just trying to find solutions.
Yeah, I know, and I appreciate you trying to find solutions. Even though I'm not content with ordinance 801 as it reads, I'm, I'm less content with the idea of the city manager choosing to set aside existing ordinance. I think that's a bad precedent and I think it's a bad situation to put you into or anybody else, building officials or whatever. I would rather have this ordinance and work towards a better ordinance. This will require less of a person coming in trying to do a project. Certainly would not trigger anybody doing a major maintenance project on their house, putting all new siding on. And so while this is not the ordinance that I would prefer, I would prefer that we approve this ordinance and not have the administration setting aside our code. I think that's, I think that's fraught with difficulties and often asking for problems, so.
Are you implying that I might have sold you on this idea?
Yes.
Sorry.
Sold me.
Not for the minutes.
You wore him down.
Okay, all right, let's, let's take some public comment. Do we have any public comment on, on the streets and sidewalk improvement ordinance 801 as it's been presented tonight? Okay, I don't, yes. Mr. Taylor, come talk to us. You're responsible for this.
So I get for stepping into it.
Yes, right.
I just want to remind, for the last conversation we had too, at the last meeting, we talked about coming back with options. But I think the thing just to keep in mind, different jurisdictions have different ways of dealing with this. The city had adopted a cost-based ordinance for dealing sidewalk repair and maintenance, but I think as we've seen, kind of some of the issues that come up with, or you get into the building of completely new sidewalks, new construction, and then the repair and maintenance issue. And in my mind, they're kind of two separate issues. So I think that we should address those, you know, kind of look at those separately. And so some cities do shared, you know, work like you suggested, but typically those are on maybe a couple panels in the sidewalk or, you know, some repair and maintenance. If you're talking about brand-new construction, commercial or residential, and you're talking about doing a whole city block, I mean, do we really want to? I don't think that would be the best idea to have city crews getting in projects of that size. So I just hope that to consider.
Yeah, thank you. Well, and those are, those are good things for us to talk about into what we hope to be our final version of this.
Commercial versus residential.
All those questions, but I do think that, I agree with Councilmember Short. I want to take the burden off of homeowners of trying to improve their properties. I believe that ordinance 801 will accomplish that and as long as we're in agreement that we are, we are adopting this with the idea that we want staff to continue to work towards a more comprehensive ordinance, then, then I certainly am supportive of that, being the one naysayer up here.
My only issue is that why are we putting this responsibility on Eric to decipher what?
We won't be.
We won't be by adopting it. If we leave it as-is, then it's up to him.
No, it's really not.
Well.
We have a code.
There's, there's the, yes, and staff can never set aside a code, but you know, the interpretation is, it just, it's a little ambiguous as currently written. So it has been interpreted different ways over the years. But, but by adopting 801, it does clarify, does clarify this. And then we would bring all those options back then to the council.
Okay.
That being said, I move that we adopt ordinance 801 and ordinance of the city council of the city of Crescent City, amending subsection 12.04.030. Improvements required of chapter 12.04, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, subtitle 12, streets, sidewalks and public places of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes. Councilmember Greenow?
No.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Fulman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Keim?
Yes.
And Mayor Ensore.
Yes. I do want to make sure that I have consensus now that we have adopted ordinance 801, that we have consensus on the council to direct staff to continue working on this ordinance and that we would like to have something brought back to us at the earliest possible, but certainly a draft ordinance by, by August. Do I have consensus that we want to see something back by August from staff?
Yes.
All right, is that clear enough direction? All right, very good. Thank you. Good conversation, good discussion. We're going to move on to new business, I guess, right? I guess we're not talking about business though, just talking about personal use. Introduce ordinance 803, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Crescent City, adding a chapter for cannabis cultivation for personal and medical use. Mr. Weir?
Our community development director, Mr. Taylor, would love to take this one.
I've been waiting this for a while. Actually, I'm going to sit over here, give the presentation and I will come back. I apologize if it's hard, but. So I just want to clarify, what we're talking about tonight is for personal or medical grows. So we're not talking about any of the commercial aspect of it currently.
And personnel.
Did you see the cover page?
Was it?
So this is just for city staff?
Some days, maybe.
Somebody's maybe.
At the last minute, putting this thing together.
That's fun.
All right, so ordinance 793 is the ordinance that we have in place. If you remember back in 2016, we adopted this as an urgency ordinance, knowing that the state basically at the time was saying after the passage of Proposition 64, that they were going to go ahead and start issuing licenses absent of any local governance. Therefore, we pass that urgency ordinance, has been placed in that ordinance, kind of outdated now because it prohibits all use of cannabis within the city, personal and commercial. Then also since then, we've had the passage of SB 94, which is the Medical Adult Use and Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, which of course, we'll go into that, has modified a lot of sections of the Health and Safety Code, allowing for personal cultivation of cannabis, basically stating that the city cannot prevent anybody from growing, do six cannabis plants in, per residence. And for medical, it's either six mature plants or 12 immature plants. And so add the applicable sections of the Health and Safety Code. So again, to allow six living plants, a city, county or city and county may enact and enforce reasonable regulations, so that's what we're talking about tonight. And of course, a city or county shall not completely prohibit persons engaging in the actions and conduct under paragraph three, inside a private residence or inside an accessory structure to a private residence. And then of course, section three, city or county may completely prohibit persons from engaging in actions and conduct under paragraph three, subsection three, outdoors upon the grounds of a private residence. So basically what it says is we cannot prevent people from growing within a structure, a residential structure or an accessory structure on a parcel, residential parcel, but we can expressly prohibit growing outdoors on those parcels. And then of course, Health and Safety Code, applicable section here, just a qualified patient or primary caregiver may possess no more than eight ounces of dried cannabis per qualified patient. And then there again, in addition to qualified patient or primary caregiver, may maintain no more than six mature or 12 immature cannabis plants per qualified patient. So, to bring this to ordinance 803, on May 17, 2018, this went before the planning commission. We held a duly notice public hearing, and at that meeting, the commission unanimously approved the ordinance without any modification to the ordinance. We also did not really receive any public comment, suggestions for modifications, as was presented and as we're presented to the council tonight. So the planning commission really preferred the indoor-only option. And two, the, the largest contributing factors to that, one is the climate within the city limits. And again, I want to stress, we're only talking about the incorporated city limits here. So one, the climate's really not conducive, they felt, to even outdoor cultivation. And then two, the largest factor is density. That really being how densely constructed the city is. If you look how close, uh, this is actually an aerial photograph of one of our residential areas, and typically, you think about a five-foot setback, which is about, about 10 feet in between residents. So they're fairly close together. So I'll go over the aspects of the ordinance, kind of the main points on the ordinance, and I can certainly answer any questions as we go through it or at the end. Again, the ordinance, the proposed ordinance 803 requires that personal cultivation performed in a residence to be done in a manner that does not alter the primary use of a kitchen, bathroom, or bedroom. This is really to prevent houses from becoming grow houses, really to, to stick with the, the intent of the law, which is to allow you for room for personal cultivation or medicinal cultivation. I think we just need to keep in mind, there's also a still rather large black market, not just in California, but across the country, and people, obviously, has historically taken houses and converted them into grow facilities. Uh, so this really makes sure that residential structures remain residential structures with a, a grow area within that structure. Again, requires that any person cultivating cannabis be a full-time resident of the location where it's being cultivated. Again, so you're not out renting a bunch of houses and converting them over. This is your primary residence. And then requires a, a single space in a single room or accessory structure, no greater than 120 square feet for the accessory structure, and no larger than 50 square feet of cultivation area in either a residential structure or an accessory structure. And the plants are required to be arranged in a single layer, where you're not stacking them on top of each other. And again, just sticking with the state limit of six plants for personal use, and of course, six mature or 12 immature for medical. And I've kind of had some pictures there of some kind of outdoor greenhouses. I know it's been some topic of the conversation. Really we want to present, prevent is access by any unauthorized persons to any cannabis cultivation. And I know there's been a lot of conversations as we go through this about it's a, it's a safer alternative to other types of medications and such, but it, in the end, it's still a drug too, same as alcohol or tobacco, and you definitely want to ensure that minors do not have access to it. Uh, just to give you an idea what 50 square feet would look like, this is kind of a rough idea, if you think about, you know, to be a 10-foot by 5-foot space, which is depicted here, if we're talking again for personal or medicinal purposes, staff felt that this was sufficient. Again, processing must be conducted in, in the same space or the same residence, and it must be in a locked and secured location. Again, same with the grow portion, must be in a locked and secured facility. Again, you may not convert the kitchen, bedroom, or bathroom, so we could prevent things of this nature. As you can see, they've had this, converted this entire house, basically. Lighting is limited to 1,200 watts total, which should be sufficient for the 50 square feet, must not exceed designed electrical system loads, and all the lighting must be rated for residential use. I think, as you see here, this was actually a house fire created by cannabis grow. Typically, historically in the past, people would use commercial lighting in residential structures, and again, they, they can overload or get too hot. I know especially down south of us, they saw, one year, I believe that's something like 11 structure fires related to cannabis grows. The ordinance requires odor-controlled ventilation system for residential structures and accessory buildings to prevent odors from escaping. Again, as you saw how close houses are to each other, everybody, although the voters have approved and said that people have the right to grow personally, but you don't have a right to infringe on other persons' right to enjoy their property. So if we can head these things off in advance for the city, hopefully it'll take away a lot of the enforcement issues that we really don't have the manpower and staffing to deal with. It's as simple as an air filtration system like this, that can go into, you'd think of it more like a bathroom fan ventilation, or it could go into some existing ventilation that you already have at the house. But it has to meet current mechanical code, but... And these are roughly what I just kind of briefly looked at. I mean, anywhere from 100 and something to $300, it's not a huge expense. Uh, accessory structure must be located in their rear yard area. Obviously, it makes sense, we're not, don't want folks to put these in their front yards. We don't allow accessory structures in side yard setbacks, and of course, we can be obviously better secured in a backyard. Uh, must be locked and secured, of course, at all times. Must be of solid construction. We felt this, actually to secure this grow facility, we didn't feel that plastic is an appropriate material. I don't know, anybody say they can 100% secure a plastic building. Of course, we also ruled on to get rid of any type of kind of hoop structures with plastic coverings. We had, did have one example here in the city where that was done. Uh, of course, the wind just ripped it apart, and the plants were kind of sticking over the fence, and I think eventually somebody came and just stole them. So the other thing we'd like to prevent that as well, not only unauthorized access to minors, but also hopefully prevent people from trying to come onto somebody else's property and remove their plants illegally. Uh, and again, the ordinance would not allow you to grow in accessory structure and in your residence at the same time, it would be either or. And again, of course, the, the main purpose always is to be locked and secured to prevent access to minors or unauthorized individuals. Those are the main points of the ordinance, as you can see in there. There's obviously, I'll go through it briefly. So as you go through the ordinance, as proposed, of course, we have our findings. We'll also just follow, follow along with kind of the history and the state law and where we're at currently. And then come to definitions, are there any questions about any of the definitions in here? Typically define what detached and fully enclosed and secured structure, what definition, cultivation, indoor, what a legal parcel is, pretty common sense definitions.
What's the difference between a mature plant and an immature plant?
Yeah, a mature plant would be probably a plant that's flowering, that's in that process, and immature plant would be, you know, smaller.
Okay, so you can, you can grow six.
So it makes it distinguish for, if it's just for personal use, you can just have six period, immature or mature. Uh, if it's for medical use, you have the medical card, you can grow up to six mature or 12 immature.
What, what section in, in the ordinance has the, the restrictions regarding the not being able to modify or change the use of a bedroom, bathroom, or kitchen? Where is that in? I, I can't find it in the ordinance right now. I, I thought I saw it previously, but I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, it should be under additional regulations. And of course, that's another part I'll point out where there too, that it does require that all exits, including emergency egress, and windows and doors, may not be blocked. Uh, that's been a huge problem over the years.
But I, I can't find that statement in the ordinance that's in front of us. Maybe I'm just missing it.
Does that encompass it at the bottom of page 8, item M, where it says, "Any modifications, alterations, or improvements made to the residence or property where medicinal cannabis cultivation occurs must be permitted and performed pursuant to all applicable ordinances, laws, and regulations." Would that encompass that same idea where you can't?
I don't know if it would or not, but I mean, what, what I saw in the presentation was pretty specific.
Right.
That, that you can't convert a bedroom, bathroom, or a kitchen. And I guess my, my question is, if that's in here, and I, and I'm not seeing it, then where, if it has to be in a secured room, and not only does the growing, the cultivation, but also the drying has got to be in a secured locked room, then what, then, 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 then you can't be in a residence, it would have to be in a garage. I don't know what other rooms you have in the house. You can't be in the living room, obviously, that's not a lock space.
Let me clarify, because we go to the definition end for a residential structure. It means any building or portion thereof legally existing, which contains living facilities, including provisions for sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation on a legal parcel approved for residential use. So again, it comes back to not being allowed to convert a house into a grow facility, that it has to be for the primary uses of residential, so you would have to have all of those components.
So really, that only becomes a factor when we, if, if and when we come to the point of talking commercial, because if we've already stated that you can only have six plants, I, I just, I'm, I'm, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I just don't know, if, if somebody asks me, then if we enact this, if, if the statement's made you can't convert a bedroom, I don't know where in this person's house, other than their garage, where, where...
Yeah, so I'll clarify, it doesn't say you can't convert a bedroom, but you have to have bedrooms, we restate it that way, makes sense. You can't...
You can't eliminate...
You can't eliminate your bedrooms.
You can't eliminate bedrooms.
Correct, so it has to meet the definition for residential structure.
So I have four bedrooms, I could convert one of them.
Correct.
And grow your six plants only.
Yep.
But you can only use 50 square feet of that room. But I don't know what else you could use that room for, based on the way we're talking about this.
Well, you could use it for your drying and your processing as well.
My, my drying.
You could use it for your drying and your processing as well, if you want to keep it all in one, in locked facility.
Well, it says, it says in the ordinance it has to be in the same room. So, uh, so that's five by, so if you have a 10 by 10 bedroom, you can only use half that bedroom, and you can't use the other half of that bedroom, I guess you could store stuff in it, your own personal stuff.
You could, if you wanted to. Nobody says you can't do something else in there.
You can't use it for a child's bedroom, obviously, because we've said it has to be secured. Yeah, well, I'm just trying to get clarification because of the, the statement about converting, you know, and I, because I just didn't know, other than a garage.
Sure, again, as I stated, it's really to prevent from houses, we want to keep them as residential.
Right.
Meaning the definition of residential.
Preferably.
Yeah.
I was also going to say, I think he, the, the reason for the, the 10 feet, or 10, the, the space is, is not necessarily to limit people from being able to change bedroom or whatever, it's, it's so that you don't have those plants stuffed into a small closet, you know, with one light hanging over it.
Light up to 50 square feet, that's what we feel is reasonable, reasonably enforceable as well, I mean, if the council wants to...
I, I just, when I saw the thing in the presentation about not being a convert, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, and that's the meaning of that.
Okay.
The other question I had, um, I have a lot of neighbors that have a second home here. They don't live here full-time, but it's their vacation home. If they're traveling...
They need to travel and grow cannabis?
Well, if they're going to be here for, say, three months.
I don't know that you can grow cannabis in three months.
Well, but this is going to impede their, their medical issues.
Well, they have their personal use...
Bring your processed cannabis with you.
They have the freedom to choose to stay with their processed cannabis also.
I'm just saying.
Or they have other options.
If they own the home, if they own the home and they're not renting the home out to anybody else, they still have to be a full-time resident.
Has to be their primary residence, yes. And again, to write that to prevent people going out and converting homes into...
Well, the concept is, is that the right goes to the person, not to the dwelling.
Correct, yes. It's for personal use.
Right, but isn't that impeding on their rights when they're in that home they own?
The idea is, I can't go out and own three homes and start growing six plants per residence, and all of a sudden, now I'm growing quite a bit.
No, I, that's not, that's not, that's not what I'm saying.
The question would be, how would you regulate whether or not they are already graduating, whether they're growing in their primary residence in San Mateo and...
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't either. I don't know how we're going to regulate most of this, uh, enforce most of this. I think it's going to be a, a real challenge for, for all of us.
Yes, our law enforcement agrees.
Something that concerns me is, I mean, you've got all these regulations, but what about the staff time and whatever, if, if we are regulating this? I mean, there's going to be costs associated with this, are we going to?
Well, there's going to be costs no matter what, there's nothing we can do about it.
Are we going to put a fee schedule together, or are we going to put permits out for this? How, how are we going to?
The council's direction, back when I presented this, was they did not want to require permits.
Not for personal use.
Okay.
And when we get to, it, when we get to that point in time to have the conversation about commercial, I think that obviously there's going to be costs associated with that.
But some jurisdictions have gone that direction, where they require permits for, for personal grows as well. And a lot of that was, is really just to ensure that any modifications that are being made are compliant with Health and Safety Code and Building Code standards.
Well, if somebody's converting their garage, they're going to have to, aren't they going to have to pull a permit to modify their garage?
Well, that's what this ordinance says, basically, it's pretty common sense, right? You're making any modification in your electrical system or structurally...
But if you don't make, but if you don't make any modifications and your garage is lockable, then you can use 50 square feet of your garage.
Correct.
Well, I, I'll, I'll let everybody else have a shot, because I have, I have a couple of things that I think that we need to, that I want to talk about, but...
Okay, we can address those if you like.
Okay, so under definitions, um, I, I still have, and, and I've mentioned this to you before, Mr. Taylor, I, I still have concerns about the, the detached, fully enclosed, secure structure. As it's defined here, it's basically a shed that doesn't have, that other than having to have some kind of ventilation, is a solid shed. It doesn't include the ability for a, what I would call a professionally constructed greenhouse. I think that a professionally, I'm not talking about, about plastic visqueen on the outside, but I'm talking about a professionally constructed greenhouse that's less than six feet tall, that's more than 10 feet back from the property line, provides an opportunity for, you can secure it, you can lock it. Yes, you can take somebody and you can bust through, um, quarter-inch Lexan or polycarbonate siding, you can bust that out, I, I have no doubt about that. But you can also bust through 3/8 inch siding pretty quickly.
It'd be a lot more har, it'd be more difficult, but...
But, but the reality is, is a person that, that's breaking into something is not breaking through the siding, whether it's polycarbonate, or if it's, or if it's the siding, they're, they're going to bust the, the door to try to get in there. My argument is, is this, if, if a person has a six-by-eight secured professional greenhouse, professional standard greenhouse in their backyard, that they're growing tomato plants and squash and peppers, and choose to put two cannabis plants in there, that seems with, with no power hooked up to it at all. It's just a freestanding, secured greenhouse. That seems to me to be a preferable place for, for cannabis to be than in somebody's residence, um, or in these places where, and I guess my, my thought would be that that provides the least impact on the, on one single stipulation, and it is the most important stipulation for, uh, outdoor of any type, or even indoor with ventilation. And that is that there is no detectable odor presented to neighboring property owners. I personally believe that a person with a, a freestanding structure underneath the sizes that are already established in here, even if it is a greenhouse that is, that is secured and does not produce odors that are detectable to the neighbors, should be allowed. That, that's my take on it, because then we're not asking them to worry about wiring and plumbing and doing all these things. We're talking about allowing...
Well, let me back up for a second, though, because state law has said that we cannot restrict them from growing in a residence or an accessory structure. It's not an either or. It's not an either or for us.
Right.
We can't keep them from doing that, we're just trying to reasonably regulate it, make sure it's done responsibly and safely.
Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, I didn't, I did, it's not what I implied, that we're taking that away. I'm just saying that it seems to be the potential of a low impact, that is not, people aren't gonna be putting in a bunch of grow lights, and so forth. I'm trying to think of the, the, I'm trying to think of the individual who's never really thought about this, and hasn't been growing cannabis, and is not sure how to do all that, who already has a small greenhouse, who might look at this as an alternative to the opioid crisis that we have in our country. And I'm just trying to be sensitive to that idea, as opposed to these people having to bring this stuff into their, into their home, or, or build a shed, and then you're, if we build a shed outside, then they're gonna have to bring power to it, which they're gonna have to come in and get a building permit to do that, because they could build a shed, but, but they can't build a shed that, that is like greenhouse, so they have to have power to put in these lights. I just, I just feel like that there could be a, an acceptable, secured, professional-type structure, that is a greenhouse style, that could be a consideration.
Mr. Taylor, was the discussion with the planning commission on this accessory buildings, was, was it something like, maybe a greenhouse would be possibly an attractive nuisance? Because you would be able to see the plants growing.
I mean, that's the idea, and it's not securable. I'm not sure of a professional standard greenhouse, but I mean, if the, and the council could weigh in on this, however you guys like.
If it's 10 feet from, if I have a six-foot fence, I'm just thinking, I'll just look at my backyard, if I have a six-foot wooden fence in my backyard, if that greenhouse is shorter, by this code, shorter than six foot, and can't be seen, whether it's got wood siding on it, or polycarbonate siding on it, I don't know how that is attracting, unless there's somebody climbing up over my fence to see what's in my backyard, and I think we have to be reasonable about the expectation. Now, if I had a chain-linked fence in my backyard.
I guess I would come back to the order control, then, how are we gonna, so you have a greenhouse, and you're growing it, and it's affecting your neighbors, then how are we gonna deal with that?
Well, then, that's why I say, if we, into the ordinance, we've already established that there cannot, that odor, we established, from a standpoint of findings, that the number one, one of the number one issues is odor control. We've defined that, and we've stated that it can't, it can't be there. I think that most of cannabis is going to be enforced based on complaints from neighbors. I think that.
So that's enough the idea here, that we, are we gonna chase down 50s a year, or 100?
I just don't see us sending the community development department, or the police department out, door-to-door checking for cannabis, what we're gonna do is respond when we get complaints.
Right, so the idea is to hopefully.
Mitigate as many complaints.
Get rid of as many complaints as we possibly can.
Yeah, I absolutely 100% agree with mitigating as many complaints as possible. So, okay, well, that, those are the two things, was the idea of converting a room, and I guess my, my view on, on a detached structure is not being required to be a solid wall structure. I agree that plastic sheeting, that kind of stuff is not, is not acceptable, but I think of a constructed greenhouse that can be secured.
Something that takes effort to break into.
Mm-hmm.
Significant effort.
But I guess, and I'm not, I don't disagree, I mean, I'm not here to sway you on the other. But it does come back to the order control issue, if we have the structure, then we can, we do have the requirement in here, it's not just that you don't have odors, but you have to have this filtration system.
When I read up, I read the code, and, and it's pretty ambiguous about what that, what mechanical ventilation really is. Basically, you have to be able to move air in and out.
And through a filter.
But it doesn't say filter in the, in the code. When I read the code.
There's no, there's no odor control if you don't have a filtration system.
Well, no, and I don't disagree with that, but just in reference to that specific point that's in this ordinance, it doesn't say anything about, about filtration. It only states in mechanical ventilation, that, that, that there has to be ventilation, it doesn't state anything about the establishment of filtration with that, in that portion of, of the code, so.
True, but it does say odor control, and just by ventilating, you're not gonna control odors.
Ventilating is moving air.
Okay, other, other questions, comments from, or Mr. Taylor, before we open up for public comment?
Well, I was gonna say, couldn't, what you were saying before, a greenhouse or whatever, be construed as a solid structure?
No, not here, because it has to have 3/8 inch siding on it. Pretty hard for light to get through 3/8 inch.
Gosh, yeah.
But that's part of my, my argument, that, that, I mean, honestly, I can go buy Lexan that, that has a higher tensile strength than T-111 siding, as far as being able to break into it, because I've installed it in windows. So I, again, if the council does not believe that, that there's any, that there's a place for a greenhouse-type structure in, in this, then it's really a moot point. I do, but I don't know, I'm not trying to sway everybody, I just think it's, it's a discussion that we should, that we should have.
I understand, and what if we were to say, you know, that if it was made of light plexiglass?
That's, yeah.
Or something like that, and we can amend this.
I think from a staff standpoint, I mean, we just need that clear direction, and so I think the, the whole point in this was that we didn't have those greenhouses that were constructed of PVC and visqueen, that all of a sudden, the wind blows, and it tears the thing apart.
Yeah.
So if you had a similar definition to what's in here, you know, with 2x4, you know, studs with, you know, some sort of, you know, clear siding, or plexiglass, or whatever it happens to be, you know, that would be, that would be acceptable as well.
And I would go back to, for under I, it does require that the ventilation, it must have a ventilation and filtration system, it is specifically called out in the code. And so I guess, then, if we're gonna, if you're gonna allow greenhouse structures, I mean, I guess, though, then how are you going to deal with the odor control? Because that, from a staff point of view, that's my biggest concern.
If a person had, or wanted to construct a Lexan secure accessory building, could they go through the variance process in their permitting request? Or would they have to stick to this ordinance using wood construction?
There's not, we don't have any kind of variance stipulation in here, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just, yeah, that would be direction from the council, if you wanted to go back and add something in for, I guess, greenhouses, or?
The other concern with a greenhouse-type structure is obviously, it would have to be weather-tight, you know, if you're gonna have a greenhouse and have electricity for grow lights, that would have to be a weather-tight structure. Now, if you could build your greenhouse where you could just simply do it off natural light, and didn't have the, the electric components in there, then that might be a different situation, but obviously, whenever you have electric, you have to have a weather-tight building.
I, yeah, and I guess I'm, maybe I'm looking at the wrong, at the wrong thing, but I've got 402.3 here, and I don't see anything under mechanical ventilation where, where it states filtration. Says, where natural ventilation is not permitted by this section of the building code, mechanical ventilation systems shall be designed, constructed, installed, to provide a method of supply air and exhaust air.
Are you looking under the, the building code?
I've got the mechanical building code 402.3, mechanical ventilation, I'm assuming that's what this.
Yeah, the ordinance specifically states that you will have a ventilation and filtration system, we're just saying it needs to be to the standards of the building code, so you're not just running it out your window, or, you know, at least the ventilation and the piping part of it, and installation has to meet code.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, the California building code doesn't, that section of the California building code doesn't address filtration?
Correct, the ordinance does, that's why it's specifically stated in the ordinance, we're just saying it needs to meet the standards, basically the standard for construction.
Okay, well, I think that, I think that section I, then, section I implies to me, as I read it, that, that the California building code is addressing this issue of, of ventilation and filtration, and the California building code, that section does not address that. So I think that if we redo this, we may need to just clean up the verbiage of I, so that, so that we are not implying that the California building code addresses this, but that we are addressing this in our, in our ordinance.
But we need to have some type of standard for construction, unless you don't feel that we.
Sure, they're just, they're just two different things to me, one of them, if there's something in here that I'm missing that establishes this, I think we need to establish something about, about odor control, absolutely agree with that, I just don't see that that is addressed in this portion of the building code.
Yeah, I mean, and you're, you're correct, I think further clarification could be made, you know, if you read that, that section I, it's requiring that the building have a, have a ventilation and a filtration system that prevents marijuana odors from exiting the interior of the structure, and that comply with the mechanical code. So I think further clarification could be made, because it's very easy to read into it like that, and you're right on the mechanical code, I mean, that's just about airflow, it's about air turnover in a building. But what this is trying to say is, we want that with filtration.
Seems pretty straightforward to me for odor control, we're asking for a filtration system, and we need it to meet certain standards when you, to install it, but.
The reality is, is there's now filtration processes that, that are not mechanical venting, there are filtration systems that are, that are organic, that actually, that meet with these compounds, that are, that you can place in small spaces that will, that will react with the, with the odors given off by cannabis and other pungent organics, and, and neutralize that odor, so that there is no escaping of unpleasant smells to neighbors. I mean, there are products out there, and there's people who are doing this because they realize that this is going to be an issue.
I would say typically, though, for indoor grows, with, because the lights do generate some heat, and there's just heat from the growing, that they do ventilate it, just for heat control as well.
Sure, and that's why, a typical indoor, inside a structure, I would absolutely agree with that, in a house or in a shed. I think some of that changes when you take power out of it, and it becomes an organic process without power.
I guess even greenhouses heat up to a certain extent, you're gonna have to vent them, so how is that gonna be done?
You do. Anyway, it just, I don't, I don't want us to, we could be here all night bantering this around, I suppose.
No, I like the idea of a greenhouse. Do it naturally.
I think we have to be very, very specific of what that would be. I mean, obviously, all the provisions that we've placed in here about it being able to be secured, I mean, it can't, it can't be, you know, just something that you, you just drop in there and throw a tarp over, but I do believe that there, that we could establish specific enough guidelines to allow for that organic type of process without power. But obviously, without power, then the ventilation has got to be, there has to be a way for the owner to, to prove that that, that odor control, and then puts the responsibility back on the homeowner, and not on us, I mean, that they have to be able to prove that they can maintain odor control with that structure.
Yeah, it would just become an enforcement issue if we have complaints and more.
That's my biggest fear.
We'd figure it out, and I don't know, we want to get in the business of taking people's marijuana poison.
No, no, I agree.
So that, that's why the ordinance was written and draft the way it was, so I don't want to think I'm coming, being argumentative here, and that certainly, if you want us to direct us to go back, we can look at that, and figure out a way to work that into the ordinance.
Okay, anybody else, should we give public chance, or you got?
Give public chance.
All right, we gotta be public comment on, on our cannabis ordinance first reading here. None? Okay, well, we'll close public comment, and we'll bring it back to the council. I will say, even though obviously, I'm, I'm making an issue about one portion of this, I'm very, very pleased with the work that's gone into this. Obviously, Mr. Taylor, you and I have spent a lot of time, we've gone, visited other jurisdictions, and I know how much time you've put into this, and I don't, I certainly don't want you to think that because of one component that, that I see, that I don't value all the work that's gone into this, because I know how much work, staff time, has gone into getting us to where we are. But it is a component that I'd like for us to look at, and if it, if, if it's not something that's really feasible, if staff comes back and say, this just doesn't work, there's just not a really, there's just really not a, a good way to do this, and be able to enforce, then, then, then I think we move, move on, but I, that's just my take, I'd like a, I'd like a harder look at that one component, everything else, I'm, I'm fully in support of.
I was gonna say, it's a good start, and thank you so much for all your hard work on this.
Okay. Buddy down at this end, Mr. Follman, you haven't had a chance to weigh in, what are your thoughts, sir?
Well, I'm actually pretty glad that you brought up the greenhouse issue in general, that was what my concerns and questions were about. I don't know too much about how a greenhouse can be constructed, so knowing that there is material out there that is stronger than just the average plastic, I mean, that's a pretty comforting thought. All in all, I know that you did put in a lot of work with this, and I was with you on one of the trips down in Arcata, it's, this wasn't an easy thing to write, especially knowing that it's basically Eric Taylor is the only staff person we have to do this, so, I mean, to put it all on Mr. Taylor, it's a big ask for a very big issue, so I appreciate that. I'd like us, yeah, to go back and look back at greenhouses, I think it's very fair, I think there's plenty of, you know, probably very experienced gardeners out there, that may just want to grow a plant or two, and know how to do it safely, and are probably aware of odor control, I don't see why they should be infringed on doing that, just because it's a greenhouse, and it doesn't have, you know, a certain number, and it isn't thick enough. I'm feeling that, that's about it. Very impressed with the ordinance, thank you for all the work that you've done.
Prochem, kind?
I think a greenhouse is a great idea, I mean, if, if we don't have to do mechanical stuff, have to worry about that kind of thing, then it gives people more freedom, I mean, that's the whole point here, is that Californians voted this in, whether we like it or not, it's here.
Well, clearly, one of the things, that the only way a greenhouse, as I see it, could even be acceptable, would be behind a solid, solid construction six-foot fence. You can't be able to, you, state law addresses that, you can't be able to look in and see the plants, and so it can't be taller than six feet, and, and you have to have, to be able to be even, that, I would think, for that would even to be a consideration, you have to have a solid fence that prohibits the ability for people to, to see that greenhouse.
Right in between the tomatoes.
Uh-huh. No, you can't just hide it with the plants, it has to be behind a security fence, so I might not be able to know the difference between tomatoes and marijuana, but I'm sure that there's others who do. I don't think marijuana grows little red things that pervade like this, do they?
Don't think so.
Okay, Mr. Shorty, any?
Nothing, I would worry that a greenhouse that could be viewed, you know, where the product could be viewed from the outside, would be an attractive nuisance, and we would have, you know, an elevated crime rate because of it, that would be my worry. For me, a six-foot fence isn't that big of a fence. I can see right over it, so it's not that, not that big a deal. Your six-foot fence doesn't scare me.
This under the table, though.
Thank you for scaring the entire public, that you're going to be looking over people's fences now, Mr. Shorty, I appreciate that.
You didn't have to go there, would you?
You're the one that brought it up, that you're gonna look, that fences mean nothing to you.
Mr. Greeno, I'm gonna interrupt him, would, do you have anything more to add?
He's much shorter than you.
There's no height requirement for code enforcement.
Mr. Greeno doesn't have anything to add. Mr. Greeno doesn't have anything to add, so I'm going to move that we introduce a lawful reading of ordinance number 803 and ordinance adding chapter 17.94 Cannabis Cultivation for Personal Use and Medical Use and amending chapter 17.93 Standards for Marijuana to Chapter 17, Zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, just so we're clear, we're approving this as is. I know you knew that. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Aware.
All right, good enough. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Fallman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Keim?
Yes.
And Mayor Ensco.
No. All right. Well, we will see this again in a month.
So just so I'm clear on staff direction on this particular case, we're going to bring back the ordinance for adoption.
As it is.
As it is, there was a lot of discussion in regard to greenhouse options. Do you want staff to bring that back at?
Don't know how we, why we would be giving that direction when we just approved the ordinance four to one.
I don't.
Clear.
There's not consensus for that. So I suppose unless somebody wants to take a vote to give that, I would have thought that if we were going to have sufficient votes to do that, we wouldn't have approved the ordinance, so.
Very good. Thank you.
I don't see anything, so just the holdout up here.
The lone wolf.
The lone, well, I'm not sure we'll go with wolf, but we were, we're certainly loaned something. All right. I think the only other item on our agenda is cancellation of the June 18th meeting and rescheduling to June 12th. Is that right?
That's correct. At the, the last meeting, we received consensus to, to put this on the agenda, which would be to cancel the June 18th meeting, reschedule it for June 12th, which is next Tuesday, or this coming Tuesday, week from tomorrow. Basically, just due to the fact that several of us will be in Rukuzun, talking about Japan on the, on the trip to visit our sister city and, and learn about the emergency management as well as the commerce and all the benefits that will come from that trip.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, then I'll take a motion that we cancel the June 18th meeting and reschedule it for June 12th.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, multiple seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. We have some legislative items to, to, to look at. I don't, because I don't have the, I can't flip all the way back to the first, but which came first?
Consider sending a letter of support of our opposition to the California State Budget request funding for, funding to strengthen disaster response.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that I was on the right one. So we have two things regarding the upcoming budget of, and I think you have a, we have a letter that is also from our Fire Chiefs Association as well as this that I shared with you from League of Cities. And I know our, you know, from Fire Chief is here. Would you like to speak to this? You, you waited through this whole meeting. I'd be, it'd be a shame for you not to get a chance to say something.
Not, not the first time working through the cannabis topic down south. Here tonight to, actually, I'm going to, I'm going to request consideration to support the letter for funding to strengthen disaster response. This was a, an effort or a movement that was started by the California Fire Chiefs Association, the California Professional Firefighters, and the California State Firefighters Association. And now, as you mentioned, the League of Cities has also jumped on board. And it's to try and push the state budget committee and the governor to allocate an additional $100 million toward disaster funding. And specifically, it's looking in the area of rather than using the same reactionary system, the California Mutual Aid System, which has worked great for the last 70 years, but it's slow, to try and start with predictable weather reports, predictable events that we know are coming, to actually pre-position resources to a location so that they can be beneficial faster. We saw 2017 was the worst disaster wildfire season the state's ever had. The, the, the folks that look at these sort of things are already saying 2018 could be worse. It's already lining up. We're already seeing in other parts of the country that it, it's a tremendous fire season already. We've got personnel that are getting ready to, that work in conjunction with us from the local area, they're already getting ready to go back again to New Mexico and Southern With this, it would, it would bring, give the ability to move resources. You think of the Santa Ana events. Well, we can also look at our own history here. Last year, we had the Chetco Bar Fire that directly impacted Crescent City and the local area. The Sour Biscuit Fire in 2002 that burned almost 500,000 acres in Oregon and California. It's the ability to move resources. If they had a prediction that we had lightning or some other type, type of event coming that was, they anticipated that would affect us, they could move resources to our area and pre-stage them ahead of the event to trying to be able to address it rather than have a 24-hour drive after they requested them. This basically looks at that, that funding ability through state OES. A strike team of engines, five engines, and a strike team leader typically is about $50,000 a day. But if you can get that resource into a location where it can go to work immediately, you don't have that lag time when we're talking sometimes 20, 25 million dollars a day or more on a major wildfire event. So I'm just looking, I'm a, a member of the California Fire Chiefs Association. I'm actually the Area Five North Director for Del Norte, Humboldt, Mendocino, and Trinity County also. So from this, just looking for that support if the, the council so determines to try and push the governor to allocate that money that would help the state of California.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Chief.
You bet. If there's any questions.
Any questions?
Seems pretty easy to me.
Yeah, that's-
I'll go back to my chair. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment regarding this letter of support for this allocation of up to $100 million for disaster response? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Yeah.
Yep.
Counsel, do we have consensus to send a letter in support of, of strengthening disaster response? Very good. The, the second item is a support for homeless funding. And you have in your packet a action alert from the League of Cities that I, I had brought and put into the packet. The, the, the big difference here in, in the homeless funding and asking for increased homeless funding, I know some people will say, "Well, we've already done that with the No Place Like Home and, and the, the $5 billion that we've allocated for that." The problem with that is, and Councilmember Short has, has worked with me on that, City Manager Weir, Mr. Taylor, Megan Miller have worked on it. We've all worked with the county in this and we're in the process of taking that $75,000 technical assistance grant to try to work to that. But here's the difference. No Place Like Home is permanent housing for chronically homeless people who also have some kind of dual diagnosis or mental health. That's a very narrow population. And what it doesn't address is temporary housing, transitional housing, getting people off the streets so that you can get them into permanent housing. And that's part of what the League of Cities and others are saying is, is that if you're going to continue to, to have this rainy day fund that's now approaching $9 billion in the state of California, then allocate some money for some temporary transitional housing for the homeless. So it is, it's not to undermine or to minimize the value of No Place Like Home. That's very, very important. And I believe that we're going to see a facility eventually built here and we're going to allocate those funds and we're going to get a handful of people who are going to get into a permanent dwelling because of that. In the meantime, we have lots and lots of people who need to make that transition off, out of the, out of the streets and into something that will provide them that, that transitional step. And so that's, that's the, the ask is that we ask our governor and our, our legislators, carve out some money to deal with this crisis. So, and again, I, I don't know how they will fund that. I'm sure the way they fund it will come back and we won't be happy with the way our legislators do it, but I don't think it's wrong for us to tell them that from our standpoint, we have homeless people who need a transitional housing and you need to start figuring out a way to, to fund that. So that's why I wanted this on here. Certainly take any input, but that's my take on this whole thing.
We can send the letter, but I'm not interested in any taxes.
I, I hear you. I, 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 I understand that. I still think we need to tell our legislators that we have a crisis that, that's affecting us and, and we need, we need resources to address it because we don't have the resources. We saw our budget. We don't have the money to, to, to establish a homeless shelter and I don't think the county does either. So anybody, anybody else?
Very much in favor of sending this letter. It is a crisis. It's a crisis happening all across the state for a myriad of reasons. And I'm particularly interested in at-risk homeless, people that are a month or two away there, a medical bill away, they're losing their car away from being homeless. That's a population that I'd really like to see helped and I hope that some of this money could help with that. But I don't like the mayor said, we don't know everything about how this funding's going to get allocated, where it's going to come from, but to at least let the state know where we stand is an important first step that this council can take.
Bring some industry back to California to save those endangered homeless.
Okay. Do we have, yeah, do we have consensus on sending a, a letter of encouraging our legislators to carve out some money for, for homeless support?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. The other item on here is a letter that has already been sent. And Councilmember Greeno asked me about this. It was a decision that, that I made while I was out of town. I was contacted by Geneva Wiki. They had an opportunity to, to make an application that could provide some increased funding opportunities to, to augment the work of building healthy communities. And I, I felt comfortable in the support that we have shown to building healthy communities and especially since building healthy communities had just recently granted us $2,500 to help with our Sister City project and those things to, to simply, in essence, state that we support the work of building healthy communities and identified some of the things that they have done and are doing in our community. It was a timely manner where literally I got the contact and had a couple hours to get it done, which is not any of your fault, but it was a decision that I made and I hope that I have your consensus support. I ran it by staff and felt comfortable in making the decision, so that's what that is.
What if we said no? Are you going to go get it back?
He can't. It's, it's already in the mail. It's already in the mail.
Yes, sir, I'm in favor of you sending this letter and thank you for taking the time out of your vacation.
Yeah, I don't know what you would do if this could-
Of course I would support that. Well, I could, yeah.
Yeah.
But in all seriousness, no, counsel short. I mean, at times there are situations that arise like this and we can't simply wait until the next council meeting. And so at times there are letters that, that get sent out and then we bring it back to the council for, for that consent vote, you know, and then the support sort of back to the fact.
One of the things that, as serving on the Legislative Committee of the League, of our, of our Redwood Association of League of Cities, one of the things that the League has suggested is for cities to adapt, to adopt a basic legislative platform that, that would address specific things so that if something came up, and, and you can make that as restrictive as you want or as broad as you want, so that if something comes up, you can offer that authority to support or to oppose based on an established platform that you already have. So if it's something that, that we, the five of us have already agreed, we're, we're always going to oppose X.
Like no new taxes.
Or we're always going to support Y. Then those things can either be, the authority to send those support or opposition letters can be, can be granted without them having come to a meeting and then they are simply ratified after the fact. It's a, it's a, it's, I discovered that, that that is very, very prominent amongst our, our other municipalities.
Well, let's have a workshop.
And that group is the League of Cities that?
No, I'm just talking about other, I talked to other cities when I was at their meeting and asked them, "How many of you do this?" And very, many of the cities have established a legislative platform by their council of what is their platform and then their support letters. The only letters that then come are the ones that, that are questionable of whether or not it fits with that established platform. And if there's uncertainty, then it needs to come to the council, but if it's a certain slam dunk, that is something that is absolutely in agreement with our, yeah, and we would have to establish a workshop to state what is our legislative platform and might be a, a great thing to consider sometime after November.
I kind of think that all, I kind of think that all letters need to come before us, honestly. That's, that's my opinion.
Sure. Well, then I, then I apologize.
I, I don't like delegating that authority.
And that's certainly, that's certainly part of the, the discussion. Yeah. Okay. We've got, still got to go into closed session, so City Manager Report, do you have some things that you would like to share with us before we go back?
Yes, just real briefly, part of the City Manager Reports I'd like to carry from, from this point forward is the first council meeting of the month. I'd just like to inform the council of all new hires as well as any resignations from city staff-wise. So we have had some new hires. Our, our parks seasonal staff is now, is now fully staffed, so we have Shafe Nunez, we have Richard Wyatt on the seasonal park side of it. Sharon Lowry has been, has been hired on as our part-time or temporary, should say, fire administrator while Vanessa Duncan was out on, out on leave. And then we've, we have some conditional offers out there as well for the senior building and parks worker. And then unfortunately, I do have one retirement to announce. Mark Warbleau, who is our mechanic two at the yard, has announced that he will be retiring on June 14th. So Mark has worked for the city for over 14 years, I think he's close to 15 years. He's responsible for being part of a lot of the projects that, that we have done from the corporate side of things. And that goes everything from revamping, you know, trucks and maintaining them on a, on a regular basis to, you know, being part of that monster garage, which they can build anything and everything, from Christmas decorations to handrails to bike racks. So a lot of, a lot of thanks goes to him and, and all the work that he's brought this community over those years.
Okay.
So that's from an employee standpoint.
And he is retired and, I was just thinking-
He will be retired June 14th. So he's put in his official paperwork and, and will be leaving us here in just a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Around the community, Safeway cleanup, just to report out to the council, has gone well. We've removed the, the Del Norte Solid Waste Authority has, did allocate a 40-yard dumpster for the trash that was filled up on the first day. And then we subsequently supplemented it with our dump trucks hauling the trash to the, to the transfer station. So over 10 of our dump trucks, we have continued to haul trash over the, the course of time and, you know, it's still going on. So that's just the, the first couple days report. So expansive cleanup, not only on the, the Macapeep site, which is located in the city limits, but also the fairgrounds. Older camp crews have been an unbelievable resource for both of us and so that work will continue throughout this week and probably into next as we continue on that endeavor. The other thing that went on this past week was again, the cleanup side of things. So we had our community clean sweep and that is where we pick up, go around as a city crew and pick up the yard debris and whatnot from all the local residents that, that they can compile out there typically over Memorial Day weekend. So we picked up over 50,000 pounds of just yard debris just in the city limits alone over those couple of days. So a lot of, a lot of cleaning up the city, getting ready for the summer season. Speaking of that, we do have a community service event that's scheduled for this Saturday, June 9th, nine o'clock at the Brother Jonathan Park. We had over 120 cubic yards of wood chips delivered, so we're going to need some help in spreading those around. So I definitely would like to, to recommend or to, to entice anybody that wants to come help the community. That's the time and place. We will need them to bring work gloves if they have them. Sun tan lotion as well is, would be on, would be on you and depending on the day could be, could be recommended as well as wheelbarrows, you know.
You've already had a bunch of kids out there helping you.
Oh, hell, I imagine.
They've climbed to the top of that pile and we're knocking chips down. It was hilarious to watch. to watch.
Sometimes the, the best playground equipment is just a pile of, you know, wood chips.
Just a pile of chips.
Exactly, gravel or whatever. Uh, so, those are the main things. Other than that, a lot of school tours, uh, around as well, so we've given several at the treatment plant, and all those have gone extremely well, so we're fortunate there, and thank you to the, to the crew at the treatment plant for giving those, as well as the schools that have come and, uh, tour. Uh, I think they've had a, a good time there, and then also the Regional Board happened to be in town, and so they also requested a tour of our treatment plant, that's the Regional Water Quality Control Board, so, we had the opportunity to do that, that went well, and they were actually here for one of the school tours, so they were able to experience our community getting involved with the treatment plant and our staff giving that tour, so.
Eric, I was curious, our dump truck, our city dump truck, is that a four-yard?
They're, they're five yards.
It's a five-yard truck?
Yeah, so it's a.
So, we are pushing one hundred cubic yards of garbage from behind city?
We are, we are well over, and Mr. Taylor can give a, a full report, but I believe it's over ten, you know, vehicles and trailers as well that we have hauled out, that doesn't, the, the yardage does not include those, so.
Incredible.
It's, uh, it is pretty amazing, especially considering, uh, that, you know, it, this isn't our first time back in that area to try to clean it up. So, so, yeah, it's been about five, about, about five years was the last cleanup, and all this garbage has accumulated just in that five-year period.
That's why we need to redevelop that property.
Yes, we do.
Okay, we have any reporting out? Anybody have anything that they wanna share before we close, since we've gotta go back into closed session? Any meetings or anything that, that we need to hear about? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Well, we had a LAFCO meeting today, Local Agency Formation Committee meeting. Um, thankfully, for the last year, we are four thousand dollars under budget, thanks to, thanks to George Williamson, our Executive Director. Um, that's a, a testament to his hard work and, uh, devotion to that agency. I also had something to say about a couple of bills that were passed and signed by the governor today, SB six oh six and AB sixteen sixty-eight. Um, they're both water regulatory, uh, bills, and they're making all of that water rationing that we saw during the summer permanent. Um, I, I think these are, are not good pieces of legislation. If, if the rumors are correct, fifty-five gallons of water is, is what you have per day to use, and that's, you, you can't even wash a load of laundry and take a shower, that's one person taking a, a shower, and, and stay underneath that. Um, so, I don't know how that slipped underneath our noses, but it did.
What are the numbers again, Mr. Greeno?
SB six oh six and AB sixteen sixty-eight.
Thank you.
Another wonderful case of Sacramento forgetting about the North Coast.
One size fits all.
Uh, I'd also like to encourage everyone in the county and the city to come out and vote tomorrow. Tomorrow is election day, it is your day to exercise your right to vote and to choose your leaders, so.
Mr. Follman, anything you would like to share?
Leave you with that.
Jason beat me to encouraging people to vote.
Okay.
Um, but besides that, I attended a chamber mixer on the thirty-first, I attended the first day of the Wednesday Farmer's Market, and went to Live From Downtown's First Friday, this last Friday. That's it.
Uh, Protamkeim?
I too, attended the Farmer's Market and, uh, Live From Downtown, it was very successful. Thank you all for coming. Um, it feels really, really good to see the streets full of people.
Yeah.
And, um, it was the first day at the Farmer's Market that we had the Power of Produce Program, and I would just like to give a shout out to Billy K. Tiger for taking that on. We, I said to her, you know, what, what were you hoping for? What, you know, how many kids were you hoping to capture? And she said, hmm, ten, fifteen, thirty-seven kids.
That was awesome.
Thirty-seven kids showed up, one little girl tasted a strawberry for the very first time in her life.
Wow.
I mean, if that doesn't say it all right there, so, a lot of good things are happening in Crescent City. Um, thank you all, I appreciate it. And yes, go vote.
I, I will just leave with one thing, I, I was on vacation the last two weeks, um, and, and it was nice to be able to, to, to take a little break and see some of our nation's history, to walk on streets that are, uh, older than our, our country is, is pretty, pretty exciting. Um, and it was good to come home to some really positive, exciting things happening. Um, Mr. Follman mentioned the, uh, Invogue's, uh, ribbon cutting and re, reopening after their fire, and, and the energy there of seeing them go, embrace the fact that they had to go all through this and that they were committed to doing business in Crescent City, and that they were going to get this done, and that was, that was exciting to see that. The, the, the Farmer's Market, seeing all those, those children show up, um, that's, you know, great, great energy, uh, of, of things that have, First Friday, the, the, I don't know whose idea the, the whole chili thing was, but that is one of the greatest ideas ever. Uh, ten bucks to be able to walk and try thirteen different chilis, um, everything from, from vegan something, um, to, to stuff that will curl your toes, and everything in between, um, being the kinda competitive guy that I am, and Councilmember Short can attest to this.
Emptied three chili bowls right in front of me, thank you very much.
I, one chili, I wanted to say that I tried everybody's, and there were some that were right at the scraping of the bottom of their barrels, but I was going to try one, matter of fact, one had absolutely nothing left in the pot, but they had not cleaned their ladle. So, I tried everybody's chili, I wanted everybody to believe that I cared about our community and the fact that they came out and they spent their time doing this really fun event for our community, they deserve to know that we, we appreciate that. And on one last thing of positive stuff, is my wife and I went out for dinner, uh, last night, in, in a local restaurant, and, uh, and there was only a couple people when we got in there, uh, just before six, and then people started lining up to get into this restaurant, people lined out the door, and I felt bad, it's like, oh my gosh, because I didn't recognize anybody, and I realized these are all people visiting our community. So, we got, I, we ate as fast as we could so that we could free up a table for people, and then, in my typical fashion, I just started talking to everybody, ask them where they're from, if you need any help, if you need to find anything, and one little kid, there's a, a group of twelve sitting at a table, one little kid says, who are you anyway? Which everybody laughed about, just kinda like that, and I said, I'm the mayor of Crescent City, he goes, no way. And by the, and my wife humored me as we, as we talked and shared with people, and every person, and I had people follow me out the door, tell me how much they enjoyed being in our community, and that this is a great place. And sometimes I don't think we always hear that, or we realize how great a community we get to live in, and how good a energy there is, and, and we have some fantastic people who live here, we have some fantastic businesses that operate here, both in the city and the county, and every now and then, it's really good to get out and just see the good things that are happening in our community, and it was, it was a great welcome home, uh, for me, and every now and then, it's a good idea to have a kid ask you, who are you anyway? It's a great question. So, with that, we are gonna adjourn our regular, uh, uh, meeting, and we're gonna go back into closed session. Counsel, do we anticipate anything to report out, uh, based on what's on our, uh, consent calendar?
Do not anticipate any reportable action.
I'm not consent, but our closed session agenda. All right, then, good night, and we will see you on June twelfth.